Welcome, everybody, to the Wareham Planning Board Meeting for Monday, June 24, 2024, also available on Zoom at the address noted at the top of the agenda posted on the website. First thing, well, let's call the meeting to order. So called meeting to order. Mike Deftis?
Yeah.
Jane Gleason?
Here.
Sam Corbett?
Here.
And Chair Michael King is here. We have a full board. Before we dive into this, just a little housekeeping here. We've got an ever on the agenda. So 15-23 Hidden Trails and 24-23 Town of Wareham, bless you. Both those public hearings were closed. They're listed improperly on the agenda, so we're going to move those down to other business and address those there. Meeting minutes, June 10, 2024. Unfortunately, the planning office neglected to provide the board with the meeting minutes to review, so we won't be acting on those this evening. So I would call for a vote to push that off to... I think, let's just do it. All right.
I move that we defer discussion of the minutes of June 10, 2024, to the meeting of July 8, 2024.
Motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor? Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
And I would like to note that Patty completed those minutes on June 11.
So they were finished. Plenty of time, just not distributed to the board.
Excuse me. It's really difficult to hear you. Could you move your microphone closer?
I can't get much closer than this, but I will. I'll try.
We're grateful for the AC, but it's hard to hear.
Do our best.
Thank you.
I see a couple of empty chairs up front, too, if that'll help. 7-24 Leanna J. Dancy and Donna J. Gully, A&R 2 and 4 C. Horse Lane. Is there anyone here to speak to that? Do you...
Go ahead.
Thank you. No, please identify yourself.
Matt Leoni with Schneider de Vignan and Leoni.
Please spell your name completely for the record.
Sure. Matthew Leoni, L.E.O.N.E.
Thank you. We have a recorder who's taken minutes, so we want to make sure we spell your name correctly.
Is there any chance that you have copies of your documents for us?
I have a board. Do you want me to copy of the application as well?
Did you submit a new app? I remember you here in January.
Yes, we did submit an entirely new application.
Okay, so unfortunately, the board did not get a copy of that. And we didn't miss the email this time. Show me.
Copy of the application and then I have another copy of the plan. I have one on the board as well.
Okay, you can speak to the board. This is an A&R application?
That's correct.
Again. Okay, so...
You guys have an easel? No?
We do. Yes.
Right there.
Just, I can't see the... Is Mr. Cordaro in the audience?
Yes.
Ah, thank you.
Tom, come in. Do I see that?
While we're waiting for the applicant. Mr. Cordaro, did you have a chance to review the street improvements at this site?
Phil Cordaro, Allen &amp; Major Associate, C.O.R.D.E.I.R.O. No, sir, we did not go out to the site.
As you remember, we met in January on this site, and you helped us enumerate the conditions for the roadway.
I do remember that sufficient line grade width. We had provided some correspondence that hopefully aided the board. We didn't go out to review the site. The intent was they were going to revise the plan to accommodate those.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure. Also, as we're passing things around, these are some photos.
One more question through the chair to Mr. Farady. Did you get this revised application for this A&R? Is that in the package? 7-24.
These are existing. This is what I was prior to get.
Was this posted to Viewpoint or the website?
The website.
Why aren't things going to Viewpoint, which is where I'm going to look for them?
We're not ready to post things on Viewpoint. Thursday, we'll be ready.
Okay. Thank you. We're just getting ourselves organized.
Okay. Do you need another minute?
I think we're getting all the stuff.
Okay.
We now have the application. All right, so we can let the applicant. I think I've been... You were supposed to punch me.
Want to see these or no?
Yes.
So you're familiar with the website?
No, it's not.
What did they want to establish? Break it off?
Clearly, they've made some improvements to the road. Thank you. Pictures are helpful.
Yes.
While we're waiting, I'm looking at the application. The tax verification form isn't signed.
I may have given you... Is it the one that I had given you?
Yeah, I think it was.
That might be my copy. The one that was submitted should be signed.
Thank you. I apologize that we're behind. Yes, Mr. Foster signed the copy in the application. Okay. That's... We probably should give that back to him because here's the official one. For the record, the board is looking at the Form A application as well as a series of pictures provided by the applicant. And a revised set of plans.
I see the improvements, you know, via the pictures to the road.
So maybe we can let them update us and then...
Yeah.
This is simply an A&R. The question is...
I had a question about a previous conversation.
Okay. Go for it.
So the one thing that caught my eye, which, if I remember right, on the original conversation, was the improvements to the road don't go all the way to the next home. They stop short of the first of the second home.
That's correct.
And that was...
That was discussed in the last meeting, and I believe that we have resolved that issue by assuring the board that both lots, as a result of this plan, will have frontage on Kermit's Road as well as Seahorse Lane, the private way.
Okay. You want to update us?
Sure. Again, for the record, Matt Leoni with Schneider de Vignan and Leoni. The resubmission of an A&R plan that was first submitted to the board on November 13, 2023. The applicants, Leanna Dacey and Donna Gully, are seeking a property line adjustment between their existing lots located in the corner of Kermit's Road and an existing 35-foot-wide private way known as Seahorse Lane. Both lots are improved with single-family dwellings that were built in the 1930s. Just as a review, as previously presented to the board, it has been discovered that the east lee side line of Kermit's Road, depicted on the original subdivision plans created in 1922 and 1927, do not agree with the current layout of Kermit's Road. This has left a portion of land owned by Donna Gully, which is known as Lot N1A, between Kermit's Road and Lot N1B, owned by Leanna Dacey. This portion is what comprises Parcel A, is the subject of the plan tonight, and is in a tent of our plan to account for this and to correct the inconsistency as it affects the applicant's lots. The board found during the November 2023 meeting that the Seahorse Lane lacked suitable width and grade to provide adequate access to the lots in question, and the applicants withdrew the application until such time that the roadway could be improved to meet the board's requirements. On March 25, the applicants informally approached the board with a roadway improvement plan for review and discussion. Subsequently, the applicant has cleared trees, excavated the existing gravel drive, and then reconstructed the roadway to a width of over 20 feet throughout for a length of approximately 110 feet. The roadway was constructed in accordance with the cross-section provided on the roadway improvement plan, having 12 inches of binding gravel with a 4-inch grated gravel surface and crushed stone laid on top. Captain Chris Smith of the Wareham Fire Department indicated in his letter to the board dated March 28 that the proposed roadway is adequate for emergency apparatus access. I do have copies of that letter if it is not included in your paperwork tonight. This resulting property line adjustment will result in both lots having over 52 feet of frontage on Kermit's Road. Lot N1B, the Dancy lot, will have 95.26 feet of frontage on Seahorse Lane, and Lot N1A, the Gully lot, will retain its original 121.69 feet of frontage along Seahorse Lane.
Questions?
No.
They're good?
I'm satisfied that the applicant responded to our requests, made the requested improvements, and now has adequate... Excuse me, has frontage on an adequate way. I'm ready to make a motion if there's any discussion. If there's no discussion...
Mike, do you have anything? Jane?
No.
Sam?
No, but I don't like being forced to have a homeowners' association. People come to town, build a million-dollar house, and we force them to plow their own roads.
Wait, I'm sorry. What's a homeowners' association?
Standard House...
This is not a subdivision, so there's no...
It doesn't matter to me.
Oh, okay, but I don't... I'm not following why it's applicable here. We're not forcing them to have a homeowners' association. Are you... You're not proposing a homeowners' association?
No, I think the forms that you guys have online have now included a... For everything, including a Form A, a Form C, and so what he's reading might be part of the form but not part of the application.
Okay, I'm good then.
Okay. I was completely surprised that you brought it up.
Line item number one says quite clearly it's not a subdivision.
Yeah. Okay. So then...
So really, the only thing that is kind of up in the air is they came before us. We told them that the road needed to be improved. They were given the cross-section of what was required. They did the work, but it was never inspected.
What we...
Technically, it hasn't been inspected.
Yeah, I don't know that we would normally have done an inspection. I guess we could take it on faith. The engineer is stating on the record...
That's correct.
And it was built according to...
Was built according to... I mean, you're putting your seal at risk if you were misleading us, correct?
Correct.
And I think his... In this case...
Yeah, no, that's good enough for me.
Mr. Cordaro, you're satisfied with that statement. Is that correct?
I would be.
Yeah, okay. That's good. I'm all right.
You're right. For example, we did an A&R last week where we took it on faith that the road met the conditions.
Okay.
So I move unless... You ready for a motion?
Yeah, I don't think anybody else has any input.
I'm... Hang on, my computer went away. I move that we accept the A&R application 724, Leanna J. Dancy and Donna J. Gully, Project 724, A&R for 2 and 4 Seahorse Lane, as submitted. Second?
We have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor? Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
I'm going to abstain as in a butter.
Okay. Sam?
Aye.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
And thank you for doing the work. It was a pleasure working with you. Well, no, for the whole team. It was a pleasure. You were very cooperative. Thank you.
Compared to some...
Yeah, actually, I'll hang on.
Okay. 15 Toby Road. Do we have anybody here to speak to this?
Hello, my name is Liam Feeny. I'm with Bowler. I'm on remotely.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, sir. Could you identify yourself and spell your last name?
Yes, my name is Liam Feeny. Last name is F.E.E.N.E.Y. I'm with Bowler Engineering, the representative for the applicant Walmart Stores. Are you guys able to hear me now?
If you speak up, we're...
Okay.
It's not just you. The audio is...
Okay. Yep. Thank you. So, yeah, so I'm with Bowler Engineering. I am a senior engineer, senior design engineer with Bowler, and with me I have Molly Obendorf, who is an assistant project manager with Bowler Engineering, and we are submitting a request for a minor revision to an approved site plan for the Walmart location located at 15 Toby Road. We're working with Walmart to make some pavement marking and signage improvements on their property, so there's no changes to the overall parking layout on the site. There's no excavation that's being proposed, and there's no building addition or modifications to the building. So we submitted a request to a minor... A request for a minor revision for... To an approved site plan for the improvements that are happening on the site and are available for questions to the board as they review.
Okay, thank you.
Are we gonna... I'll go later. Mike, do you have anything?
We don't have any...
It's on the website, unfortunately. It didn't get distributed.
We didn't get any documentation in the box. I mean, I read it.
There's no job number or... Oh, here it is. 2211.
Yes, 2211.
So I guess I'll start.
Although it should have a new job number because this is a new... So Josh, this should not be listed as 2211. This should have a new application. Was there an application? Do we have the application in the box?
No.
As far as application, it's only a letter from the engineer. There is no application for the minor modification. It's just a letter requesting a minor modification from the applicant, and I think it would probably still remain as that same job number just because it's a modification to something you've already approved.
Other modifications have been given... They're major modifications, so...
Okay, yeah, I mean, there's probably a discussion to be had about how we do that moving forward, but I think this probably makes the most sense.
We're going to track it as 2211.
That's fine.
Okay. Are you gonna...
Yeah.
Okay, I have to...
So as I read through the request, what I'm seeing is new striping on the pavement, some modifications as far as enhancements to the look of the building and such. So I'm assuming this is, for the lack of a better way of putting it, kind of a prettying up an existing facility type of project?
That would be correct. Yes, it's bringing the parking lot up to Walmart's standards and increasing invisibility and bringing in better stop conditions where it's largely stop signs and stop bars that are being introduced to the site.
Okay.
Throughout the parking lot.
You used an interesting phrase, bringing it up to Walmart's standards. Could we work into this modification a better set of standards for maintaining the island plantings and vegetation on that property? Because the place looks horrible all the time.
Yeah, I want to bring into the record a former complaint raised by the board at our meeting. I'm trying to find the date of our meeting. I sent these to the planning office for the record. They were not posted. Hang on, so I want to read for the record the minutes. I got to find my date.
That's when you, Charlie, and I were out there.
Huh?
That's when you, Charlie, and I were out there.
Yes. So in... Here it is. Okay, so the minutes, I want to read, enter to the record the minutes of the planning board meeting dated 11/22... 11th, November 14, 2022, where the planning board raised concerns about the conditions of the maintenance along the accessway, the garbage accumulating along the fence...
Retention.
And the retention basins. I want to enter into the record a request that was made to the planning office and the zoning enforcement officer for zoning action, none of which appears to have occurred. So that's a concern that we have. So to support Mr. King's request that this be conditioned with much improved maintenance of those areas, that's one input. So those two items need to be entered into the record. I want to read in two more items, the two approval...
They never responded.
No, well, I don't know that the letter was ever written. I've requested for confirmation from the planning office or the zoning enforcement officer that action was taken. I got no response. All right, so then the other item we need to bring up for the record, just so we can add it to the record. Two items for the record. The conditions of approval for the Walmart decision for Project 2211, the date of the conditions of approval were April 10, 2012, where conditions for maintenance were included. And along with that, there was a corresponding ruling from the zoning board for this... For their... I don't know if their number was also 2020, 2211, and the date of their document was the same date. So those two items need to be read into the record. Again, there were requirements for maintenance of the areas, which...
Have not been kept up.
Well, we sent a request for zoning enforcement and an opinion. We did not get it. But I don't know Mr. Turner ever got the note either, so...
Can we back up for a second? I'd like to comment.
Of course.
I would like to hear what the minor modifications planned are for Mr. Feeny. It sounds like we've heard what they're not, but not what they are.
Okay.
So I'd love to hear a summary, and maybe there will be some meeting of the minds with what they're going to do and these concerns that were brought up earlier.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for hearing from me. So yes, the minor modifications are largely to do with pavement markings and pavement stripings as well as signage within the parking lot. So as noted on the plan, the pavement markings are to be refreshed largely in existing conditions, with the exception of the north face of the building. Walmart would like to bring that area up to accommodate some pickup operations, so there are 11 spaces in that area today, and so they will be restriped with pickup signs. So there will be some additional signage on the north face of the building and...
Sorry to interrupt.
Yep.
Could you tell me if north is the front or left?
I'm sorry, plan north. So in...
So the elevations that we've been given are front elevation, left elevation, right elevation?
Yep. So I can pull up the elevations here. It would be the... On the right elevation where the existing pickup canopy is, so there would be some additional signage there for clear pickup signage and operations on that side of the building.
It would be just signage, no more additional canopies?
No, the existing canopy is to remain there, and it would just be largely pickup pavement striping improvements in that area.
So nothing to do with... And this wouldn't make sense as part of a minor revision anyway, site maintenance and plantings. I would think that that would fall under general maintenance anyway.
No, that was just brought up as a...
That's correct. That's correct, yes. So the purpose of this minor revision is to...
Condition the modification in any way we want.
Yeah, sure. No, in terms of the minor modification, not necessarily in terms of just general, it needs to be kept up, and I think that... Yeah. Seeing as two separate issues.
Understood. Thank you. Yes, the plans are largely focused on pavement markings and signage improvements throughout the property.
My opinion is they're in violation of the original conditions. So they want a modification. In my opinion only, they're a violation. What Charlie, Carl, and I saw was horrible. I mean, nothing was kept up. Everything was overgrown, dead trees, dead shrubs, trash. The retention areas looked like trash bins, carts, everything in there. Those are all violations, and I don't think it's fair to approve minor modifications if they're in violation of the original conditions. That's just my opinion.
I happen to agree.
In principle, I think I agree as well. I'm not sure how it works.
But now's the time.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, can you grant a minor modification to a site plan that is in violation of the COA?
Good question.
That's my point.
For a point of record, we can't establish that it's in violation till we get a report from the zoning enforcement officer. We can establish our opinion that it's in violation.
That's right.
That's... And I agree with your opinion.
Okay.
So do we condition the minor modification to include as part of this, bringing those areas up to standard?
So Bowler can work with the applicant. If that's a condition, we can work with the applicant to address your concerns with maintenance around the property. Absolutely can work with them on that if it were to be a condition of the approval.
Or if our original request for...
Had been written.
Has been followed through on.
I guess the way we look at it is that the subject of the lack of maintenance has been established on the public forum. So now the letter will be written, the inspection will be done, the code enforcement officer will make a site visit, and he will determine whether or not the property is in violation. So whether we give them a minor modification or not, they still have that issue to deal with.
Right. In my opinion, it should be addressed prior to minor modification being approved.
Do we continue this until we've heard what the...
I would suggest that because I was ready to vote against it because the conditions weren't met the last time we corresponded with them. And I'm a big fan of Walmart. I'm not to take this personally, but the conditions are in violation. Current conditions are in violation of the original. At the very least, we should continue it until we complete what we need to do.
Until an inspection's been made and it's been... Until an inspection's been made and it's been determined if there's a violation?
Right.
And to what extent?
Just a question here. I have my assistant project manager on as well, Molly Obendorf from Bowler. I think she has a couple things to say as well, if that's okay.
If she would introduce herself and spell her name.
Yes, of course. Hi, for the record, my name is Molly Obendorf, O-B-E-N-D-O-R-F. I'm an assistant project manager with Bowler. We, this, in my opinion, is a separate issue. I mean, what we're doing is simply just updating pavement markings and stop signage. So I believe it's a separate issue if Walmart is in violation of the, you know, overall maintenance of the project. So if that's something that you would prefer to condition on this approval, I think that's fine. As Liam said, we can work with Walmart to notify them of the maintenance issue. But I really do think this is a separate issue at hand. And like you said, you brought it up to the zoning enforcement officer before. But we're just looking for an approval for a minor modification to an approved site plan, and the work at hand is updating the site striping and stop signage throughout the site.
I would tend to agree that it's, that they are separate issues. However, I would disagree in that it's the same owner, and the owner being Walmart, and trying to get compliance with our concerns about the non-compliance with the COA.
It's not non-compliance, it's a violation.
A violation.
That has to be determined.
I agree, in my opinion.
I would like to make a motion, then. I'm going to point at you. So you can, I move that the clerk of the planning board write a letter to the zoning enforcement officer, requesting, expressing our concerns about the condition of the Walmart parking lot, and ask for a ruling on those issues.
CC Walmart?
Well, sure. We could copy the applicant, yes.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor? Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
I guess aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Or Jane, I'm not sure which.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Okay.
So now it's on the record that we won.
Yep.
And the site, site visit done, okay.
And I apologize, if we didn't send the letter to them, I apologize. If they did, then they should be held accountable.
I have no, I've asked for proof of that, I have nothing on that. So I then, having listened to the applicant and looked at the plans, I do agree this is a minor modification, and I think that zoning enforcement can proceed in parallel. So I'm going to move that we approve the minor modification to, hang on, I got to read it. 2211 Walmart Stores, Inc., request for minor revision to approved site plan, 15 Road, Toby Road.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Jane Gleason. All in favor? Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Nay.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Great, thank you guys so much, appreciate your time.
Thank you all.
Just please, please take heed to the suggestion about getting that addressed.
Absolutely.
Yes, understood.
Enforcement officer's going to come back, so it's just a matter of getting it done.
Great, thank you guys again.
All right, continued public hearings. 12-22 Wareham, MA 3 LLC, 91 and 101 Farring Hill Road, site plan review map 91 and 71 lots, 1,000 and 1,007, proposing ground-mounted solar energy generation facility.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's been a while. You all look well. If I may, Mr. Chairman, just take a minute.
Could you introduce yourself and spell your name for the record, please?
For the record, my name is Joe Shanahan. I'm senior manager for RWE Clean Energy, the applicant in connection with this.
And could you spell it for our minute taker, please?
Shanahan is spelled S-H-A-N-A-H-A-N.
Thank you.
No documents.
Just a question before you make your, did we get any updated material for this evening? Did you submit any updated material?
No, I have a couple of submissions for tonight, but you wouldn't have needed them in advance.
Okay, thank you.
As all of you are aware on this board, this application has been pending before you for over three years now. We went through about 18 months of public hearings before the planning board and before the conservation commission. And as you'll recall, your local bylaw is a bit of an anomaly indicating that the planning board cannot act until the conservation commission issues are resolved. So in November of 2022, the local conservation commission voted to turn down the project under the Local Wetlands Act and under the State Wetlands Protection Act. We in turn appealed the denial under the Wetlands Protection Act to the DEP. We appealed the denial under the local wetlands bylaw to the Superior Court. Those appeals were entered. As this board may recall, during the 18 months of public hearings, a number of local residents had raised a number of issues, one of which were the allegations that this site contained historic archaeological or cultural resources. And one resident was rather adamant that this matter should be forwarded to the Massachusetts Historical Commission for review and determination. That wasn't required, but because of the neighborhood input, when we went to the DEP for our appeal, the DEP referred the matter to Massachusetts Historical Commission and said they weren't going to touch the appeal until Mass Historical Commission reviewed the entire matter. As a result of that, we hired a consultant, the Public Archaeological Laboratory. We negotiated with Mass Historical Commission on the scope of what was to be done out there for them to complete their review. We entered into a scope of work agreement with them, and PAL went out, did a history of the site, and we were required to do 80 test pits throughout the site.
Eight, zero?
Eight, zero. As part of that, we then went forward with 170-page technical report from PAL, which was filed with Mass Historical Commission. And after that report was filed, the Mass Historical Commission came back with a determination that there were no cultural, historic, or archaeological features at the site to be concerned with. I do have a copy of that, and I would like to leave it.
Are you going to submit the 178-page report for our records?
I had thought of doing that as the Schultz, but I found today I couldn't get that emailed to me on my computer, so I'm having it mailed.
Okay.
We'll have a copy of that report.
Thank you, I will read it.
I believe that.
So for, excuse me, for the record, Mr. Shanahan handed us a document dated January 2, 2024, on the letterhead of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, referring to the project, and it's a summary of, it's a summary of the findings.
That's correct.
Okay. And it's signed by Brona Simon, for the record.
Okay, as Mr. Schultz indicated, that letter came in in January. It was at that point the DEP actually began its review of our appeal of the denial. The DEP, just a month ago, on May 10, 2024, entered a superseding order of conditions, overturning the local conservation commission.
What was the date of that?
That was May 10, 2024. If I may, I'd like to enter that. I would indicate that the town had a.
Can we read that? Mike, can you read that into the record, just so we, okay. For the record, Mr. Shanahan has handed us a copy of WPA Form 5, superseding order of conditions. I guess the number is SE 76-2684, and I'm looking for a date, dates, dates, date of issuance of the local order, I'm looking for the superseding.
Check the last page.
Not my instrument, Mr. Schultz. I believe it stated May 10.
With the signature?
Yes, there is a signature page, and it's certified on May 10, 2024.
Thank you. Once that issued, there is a statutory appeals period. The town obviously had a right to appeal. The conservation commission chose not to appeal that decision overturning the denial. I would indicate that 10 residents came together in what's known as a 10-residence group, engaged legal counsel, and filed an appeal with the DEP Office of Appeals and Dispute Resolution, and we had a settlement meeting on that matter last week. I think it's interesting, and I want to put it on the record, that during these proceedings, a number of residents who were now plaintiffs in the appeal of the DEP order, had asked this board to have this matter reviewed by the Mass Historical Commission. We ended up filing the determination by the Mass Historical Commission, and one of the grounds of the appeal is that they don't like the decision of the Mass Historical Commission. And I want to go one layer below that, and the reason they don't like the decision with the Mass Historical Commission is they allege that the tribes were not involved in the review and the report. I don't know whether it's a misrepresentation in the appeal or just a lack of knowledge, but I want this board to know as part of the technical review, we not only contacted the tribes, but the Mass Historical Commission came to me and asked me if I would reimburse the tribes for them to hire an outside consultant to witness the 80 test pits and enter a finding. And to be candid with you, being a little bit Irish, I was tempted to tell you, go hire your own expert, but in order to move this matter along, we did agree to reimburse them, and they were part of that entire study and report. So at this point, we are in front of the dispute resolution board at DEP. On that appeal, we're conferring with attorney Richard Bowen and the Conservation Commission with regard to this Superior Court case, trying to come out what the determination is to whether the town wants to litigate that part of the appeal when the DEP has already reviewed it and entered a superseding order. So all of that adds up to the reason that we and you still aren't ready to go forward with this application, and I would ask if you would consider continuing again to your first meeting in August of this year. No worries. We've all come to know each other so well, Mr. Schultz, no offense taken.
This is a public hearing, so before we make any motion on that request, I guess we have to hear, it's still an open public hearing, unless you want to move, no, we can't, if we close the public hearing, then we wouldn't be able to take any updates.
Right. Is there any input from the board before I open it up to the public?
No, not this time.
Okay.
Please, new information.
Yeah.
This is years in the making.
No, I agree, and I will reiterate.
Please.
And be assertive on if we're not getting new information.
Yeah. Okay, being a public meeting.
Why don't you, I think maybe you could stay there if you want.
Is anyone in the gallery that would like to come forward? Now's the time. Sir?
Don Jepson, Precinct 3, Long Beach Road.
You can spell your last name, Don.
J-E.
Closer to the.
Juliet Echo Papa Sierra Oscar November.
Okay. As in the past, with these public hearings that go on for long periods of time, we ask the public, by all means, please come forward and be heard, but we're looking for new information. We don't want to hear regurgitated information that has been presented several times prior. So if we could stick to that, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, I have not followed all of the, just what I've read in the newspaper, so. But I would like to share an article that I read recently, which is an introduction to forest carbon.
Okay, do you have a copy of that article?
Yes, I'd be glad to pass it on to you.
Okay, thank you.
And there's really, there's two introductory chapters, which are quite interesting. One, and this is written by an individual who is an assistant professor at the University of Vermont, and it backed up with all of the accolades and comments from this person. This is an article that was printed in the spring of 2023 by Alexandria Kosiba. And what she says is, it puts it in very simple terms as to what's going on. She talks about carbon storage, and she talks about carbon sequestration. Carbon storage is the amount of carbon contained in an entity such as a tree, an acre of forest, a piece of lumber, or a cubic yard of soil. One analogy that you may be helpful to think of, carbon storage is the amount of money in your bank account. However, carbon is measured as mass, usually as pounds or tons. The second chapter talks about carbon sequestration, which is the process of removing carbon dioxide from the air through photosynthesis and storing the carbon from those CO2 molecules in wood, leaves, branches, bark, and soil. Although all green plants sequester carbon, trees are particularly good at it because of their perennial woody structure and large size. In the bank account analogy, sequestration is the rate you deposit your money into your account.
We have touched on the subject of the importance of trees and carbon renewal, so we will, if you could maybe summarize to a greater extent.
I will summarize that in the last chapter that I mentioned. If we're going to be cutting down all those trees, you're not just cutting down what is in the trees, you're also cutting down and disturbing what's in the soil. Carbon is not the only critical ecosystem that forests provide. Forests also cycle oxygen that we breathe and water that we drink. They moderate temperature fluctuations, control soil erosion, and reduce flooding. And forests provide a local source of building materials and fuel wood, habitat for wildlife, and a place for recreation and cultural importance. When we think about the role forests have to help mitigate climate change, we must consider their present role along with their future and resilience. My point being that if this area is clear cut, it's not just the trees that are going, it's the soil and everything else that disturb. that are going, it's the soil and everything else that disturb, which is like the bank that they talk about. So if you're all fully aware of that, if not, I will pass this along to you, because the article is definitely one of the best I've ever read.
Yeah, where you've noted it for the record, I would like to have it.
Okay, thank you. I'll bring it forward.
Yeah, you... I can't see to save my life. That's why I keep handing them to you.
Can you hand it to me? I'll read it into the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
For the record, we've been handed a document dated February 10, 2023, by Alexandra Kosiba, called "An Introduction to Forest Carbon." So for the record and for the... We'll get a copy posted for the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask, if that's going to be entered into the record, may I hear from what source it comes?
There's no reference on here. I'll make sure you get a copy. So the app-
Do you understand my point?
No, I understand. The citizen handed it in. We'll consider it as it's consistent with other materials that have been provided. And well, Josh, can you help us make sure that these things get copied and Mr. Shanahan gets a copy of it? So that's an action for the record that we have to get Mr. Shanahan a copy of that document.
Is there anybody else who would like to come forward? Nope, that's quite all right.
Hello. My name is Alice Stuffy, D U F F Y. I live at 112 Farring Hill Road in West Wayham. I've lived there for 43 years, and I've been dealing with a lot of water issues. I live right across from where they would like to put those solar panels. I have been dealing with Derek from the town. I have brought him pictures of my land where the water has been going into it. There was a house built at 1110 Farring Hill Road, right next to me. When that land was built back in 2003, they had taken that land and built it higher than my level. It was up to my chest in my backyard because the land there was high water level. So they had a builder come in, and he applied truckloads of-
I'm sorry, how does this relate?
It relates because what happens is when you tear down everything across the street from where I live, I have water on three sides of me now as it is. You tear those woods down in front on the opposite side of the street, where the water is going to come running down, it's going to come running down into my property. I already have issues with it, and I do not want it to happen again.
Okay, so basically, what I'm hearing then is a concern that should the project be approved and built, it's going to... It's just going to make a bad water situation worse?
Oh, yes.
Okay. All right. That's... I just want to understand your concern. The leading up to it as far as the house and the building and all that, really?
Well, the thing is, is that I just feel that this town does not care about-
Well, that's... I'm going to take offense to that right now.
Okay.
Now.
So I have spoken with Derek regarding the situation that I am in. He has sent several... Paul Turner came over because I have a signed letter from the department.
I agree. I understand your concern. It is on the record. We appreciate you noting the concern for the water. But the history of what Derek and Paul... That has nothing to do with what's going on here. We don't have any documentation of any conversations, any letters, anything. If you'd like to submit them as documents to this hearing, be more than happy to take them.
Okay. I will give them to you, and you can... I don't have a copy with me right now. I can get you a copy and submit them. I have what I have here right now.
Okay.
And these are my copies.
Well, if you'd like to have them, a formal document submitted into the record, that would be fine. Bring it to the planning office, and they'll make sure that it gets added to the project.
Okay. So what is it... What are they going to do if that project does get approved regarding the water situation in that area?
That I can't answer.
Okay.
Just as a comment in response to the citizen through you, there... For the record and for your review, there are detailed stormwater management, runoff management plans posted on the project website, which have been reviewed extensively over the last three years. We've talked about water. We've talked about water runoff. I'm not voicing an opinion. That's facts that have been presented in record that will have to be part of the final decision. It's also part of what Conservation Commission and the ruling from CONCOM was based on. So there are extensive documents on the project site supporting and counterclaims about the runoff and water management. So the applicant has proposed mitigation, all of which is available for your review.
Okay.
So I'm pointing you that if you have the question... So your question is, what will they do? I can tell you what was proposed.
Right.
And that's available for all citizens to review.
Okay.
It's on the town website.
Okay.
Or not the town website. Well, the town website, but the project website.
Okay.
But it's good information to allow you to form an opinion, which we have to form an opinion.
Okay.
And-
Thank you.
And you should know that your concerns about runoff have been voiced by many citizens, and it's well-established. Those concerns are well-established.
They really should put drainage in on Farring Hill Road. There is no type of drainage whatsoever.
Well, that's certainly beyond the scope of what we're doing here.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Kathy?
I must also spell my last name.
Thank you.
Kathy Papalardo, Farring Hill Road. P as in Peter, A. P P A L A R D O. I just have two things. Number one, I was looking at all of the past public hearings, just looking at all of the agendas, et cetera, and somewhere along the line, the map number is wrong because it's supposed to be map 91 and map 74, but if you look at all of the papers, they say map 91 and map 71. So a typo happened somewhere, and it's just been carried-
Carried forward.
So I thought I would point that out to-
Thank you.
-get it corrected.
For the record, through you, Mr. Chair, could we make a request to the planning office to check the map and references? Josh, you can help us with that. We'll just get that clarified. It's the same project. It didn't move. It's the same place.
No, it's that... Wherever the typo happened, I don't... I didn't find that, but it said, wait a second, there's a switch here. And then the last question is, which set of bylaws are we using for this project?
I believe this is still October of 2019.
Even though it was totally... Originally, it was withdrawn without prejudice and-
They have... They filed a subdivision plan that gave them zoning protection.
About eight years?
I don't know if you perfected it or not, but they had protection enough until the time of the reapplication.
So October of 19?
2000... That's what I believe. We can... Before we make a final ruling, we'll double-check that, but that's what I believe we're using.
Okay.
And that was established because they filed a subdivision plan to get zoning protection.
How long does that protection last?
Well, that's what I said. Initially, I-
I think it's eight years.
Well, if they perfected... They had to file a definitive. I don't know. Did you... Mr. Shanahan, did you file a definitive subdivision plan or just the preliminary?
It's been so long, Mr. Schultz.
Okay. I think I only remember-
Comfortable we perfected-
Okay.
The freeze aspect of the-
We can double-check that. I know they filed a subdivision plan. I don't know if it was a definitive. This was at the time when all of the solar projects-
Right.
...filed-
Subdivision.
Subdivision plans to perfect there because they were anticipating the zoning bylaw. And that's not something that's specific to the town. The state gives everyone the right to do that, and nothing... Nobody did anything untoward. It's the way it works. So we can find out the dates of those plans. I think it was January... Mr. Swenson was still the chair. It was January of 2022, I think. All that's on the record as well on the town website and is available. But they perfected that to protect their-
So if it's a definitive subdivision, it has protection for eight years?
Eight years.
But if it's not definitive?
I think they... At least for the period for them to file their new application, they were protected. And once they filed the application, they established.
Thank you.
It's very... It's procedurally, you got to follow. And I know you are on top of that. So if we missed it, you'll let us know.
For the record, there was a definitive subdivision that you guys reviewed in 2021, and there was also a preliminary subdivision that you guys reviewed also in 2021.
Okay, it was 2021. I was a year off, so.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to come forward and speak? Thought I saw her hand. I'm going to have Ann... She's been trying desperately to... Well, every time you put your hand up, somebody else comes up. Okay, Ann, you and I have history. You know my position, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, good.
I could quote it.
So please.
Annie Hayes, H A Y E S, Farmer's Lane. I am addressing three categories of toxins, potential toxins, that are involved in solar panels, and this project would be specific to that. A very quick history. When the proposal began, the proponent said there would be JNCO panels. And I asked about PFAS because I'd learned about it, and there was an old carbon copied kind of letter from DuPont that put TEDLAR coating on the JNCO panels and said there are no PFAS. However, TEDLAR is a PFAS. It's a polymer PFAS, and it is said to be coating as an anti-water hydrophobic agent on the 15,500 panels that would be on Farring Hill. Up until this point, what I see on the application is under the category of environmental impact to neighborhood systems, including water. The proponent has written "not applicable." It's highly applicable. Applicable. The polyvinyl fluoride, PFAS polymer, was pretty much ignored by... Certainly Ken Buckland said it was not a PFAS. Yet expert scientists say, quote, "Perhaps most surprising is..."
Have we... This PFAS discussion seems oddly familiar.
Well, but along, along... Three years. Three years. And it's the context for what I'm bringing up. There's an accumulation of toxins that are now, with new information, known to be able and present... Are present in human bodies.
And do you have documentation for that?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And so you'll have a copy for the board?
And I'm summarizing because I know how you feel about long statements, but I will give you the information.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Yeah. So the expert scientists on TEDLAR, the polymer PFAS, say, "Perhaps most surprising is the fact that one type of PFAS, palmeric PFAS, can break down into microplastics. This palmeric PFAS group consists of fluoropolymers, side-chain fluorinated polymers, and poly- or perfluoropolyethers. PTFE and PVF, polyvinyl fluoride coating on the panels, the JNCO panels on Farring Hill, may occur as secondary microplastics in the environment or is intentionally produced primary microplastics."
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Just to be clear, is the speaker's reference to the project on Farring Hill Road something she's reading out of the report, or is she going back and forth between the report?
I said, quote.
You can address me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did say, quote, the expert scientists-
So if-
-regarding the polyvinyl fluoride.
Again, to my point, the PFAS discussion has had taken place on this project probably two dozen times over the past three years. So if you could just kind of get to the point of what it is this document is-
The point is... I'm sorry to interrupt. The point is that now PFAS are global. They're found in our bodies. They're found in water everywhere across the globe.
Okay.
And there is enormous amount of documentation of this. So the last part of this is due to their high-density environmental PTFE and PFAS... Sorry, polyvinyl fluoride microplastics are more likely to settle into sediment, which makes their removal challenging, hard to get out. So three years later, here we are, and there's an accumulation of scientific information which has gained public awareness. April of this year.
Do you have this document... This information that you're referencing, do you have documentation?
Yeah, I've got the quotes and the sources.
Well, yeah, but you've got quotes. Is it handwritten on a piece of paper, or is it the actual document?
I've got you a link for the document. I can't put the document in. Okay?
I'm going to give you one minute to wrap up the conversation on PFAS.
Oh, on PFAS, sure. You got it. No, but this has-
I've already given you more time than I should have on this subject because we've beaten this subject to death.
We haven't because it's all new. We haven't spoken about PFAS since April. It's a new awareness of the global proliferation.
I think the whole world understands PFAS. I'm killing myself right now with this.
I know. And then... Okay.
If you-
Can you make it specifically relevant to this project?
It is because-
How?
Polyvinyl fluoride-
Show me. Do you have evidence?
PFAS.
Do you have evidence that the panels leach?
The runoff.
So you have evidence that says the water... Water... I'm asking. Does the water running off the panel leach PFAS into the soil?
Coatings are affected by UV, and yes, they can.
I understand that's... I'm asking-
Do they use the exact word leaching? No, but they can degrade over time.
Do you have a scientific document that you could... I'm supporting what you're telling us. Can you substantiate from one of your sources that the panels... One of the problems we face, Annie, as you know, is the state is mandating this. They... And the federal government is mandating it. So one of the counterstruggles is, the presumption is they're safe. So I'm looking for you.
Carl, you're presuming that after 30 years with UV light and intensified weather, that nothing is going to happen to a surface coating, and I think that that is presumptive.
I'm asking, do you have evidence to support your concern?
I will get you more documentation than I have in this report because, Carl, I knew I would have so little time in there. We haven't got to microplastics and nanoparticles, which is the brand-new subject, and it's very disturbing.
I'm going to give you one minute.
Well, I do object to her saying that she doesn't have... We've had three years, and you've testified. And we listen, and I appreciate it. You testify every time at every solar project, and we absorb everything that you say. We do.
And you've sent us massive documentation, Annie, which we've all read, and I have a stack, and we're very aware of it.
I'm just going to submit you this document and the latest information about nanoparticles.
And I read new information every day.
Well, but that's not being heard, and part of this is educational, is my consideration.
But you're talking to five people who've been talking to four... Four years of listening to it. We understand, really.
Okay. These people are very important to me.
I agree. That's why we're here. That's why we volunteer four years.
That you get. They don't see them. It's all new to them. And I find that troublesome, that it's so—it's given so short shrift to the public that comes, and they are affected for 30 years. Colleen has lived in her house since before she was born.
All right, you're kind of rolling off the rails here.
Okay.
I'll take the documents, please.
I'm not—I'm—these are all scratched up. They're gonna have to be redone for you.
Okay.
Okay.
Going forward, anybody that wants to make an assertion about safety or whatever, don't come and just discuss from, you know, hastily put-together screenshots. Bring the document with you.
I have the links, all of them. I never put hastily gathered screenshots.
But I'm asking for it, and you're not giving it to me. So you don't have a document that I can put on the record.
I mean, this is all scratched up. I didn't think that I would do—that—I will give it to you.
Thank you.
It's not a problem.
Thank you. I appreciate it because we do want it on the record.
I hope so.
We do care.
I know.
Yeah.
I know you do. And I respect all of you.
We have been listening for four years. We do care. Three and a half.
Anybody else in the gallery?
There was a gentleman in the back with a hat.
Before—yeah, I was just gonna say—
I think somebody else raised a hand. I'll go last.
No, we're not gonna have duplicates.
All right, just again, if it's not new and you're just gonna kind of reiterate what somebody's already said?
I have a question. So I have no scientific data.
Please sit and introduce yourself.
My name's Colleen Malone, M-A-L-O-N-E. I'm at 114 Farring Hill Road, where this is directly across the street from my house. Now, you've—water is my concern. That's my main concern on my property, my sump pump, blah, blah, blah. You've heard it, I've said it. Now, tonight, you said we can look at the—what their plans are and stuff, you know, on their web—on the project website. Also, you know, the state thinks it seems safe. Well, what happens when their plans don't work? And my basement's filling. I've been there 47 years. And like, what—where do I go then? Like, what happens when the plan doesn't work? I mean, this is going in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And dozens of homes are gonna be affected. My house isn't the only house that has a sump pump and water problems. Obviously, you've heard. But what happens when his plan doesn't work? Where do we go then? Who do we go and talk to then? Do we go another four years fighting that? Like, that's where it gets a little crazy. And at some point, we have to do the right thing. This is in the middle of a residential neighborhood. If you were here telling me you were building 15 houses, 20 houses across the street from me, it is what it is. Bring more people to the town. It's a great town. I've been here my entire life. But you're telling me you're putting solar panels in the middle of a residential neighborhood?
Please, for just for one second. I understand it's an emotional event.
Well, it's just—it's—
We take what we're doing very seriously. We wouldn't be here for the last three years tearing this thing to shreds.
And I wouldn't be coming here, too.
But we don't—but we don't get to decide whether or not that site is appropriate as far as zoning is concerned. So when you—when you use the phrase "you're putting"—
Okay.
We're not putting anything.
Right, you didn't zone—
We're trying—to figure out the best path forward that is the best thing for the residents. Because quite frankly, that's—that's my only focus, is the residents. But we also have to be fair to the proponent because he's protected under the zoning laws. So that's why we ask for this input.
Yeah.
But please don't assume that it's a foregone conclusion that we've decided to put solar panels there.
I'm not really assuming anything as far as—I mean, I may have worded it incorrectly.
Yes.
I will say that. But like, where do we go when it doesn't work?
I agree. I agree with you 100%.
That's—that's where—
If it makes a bad water problem worse, you're the one that suffers. I get it.
Yeah.
But again, that's why—that's why we're here digging into this thing as deep as we are.
And if this is a lot, like, is there gonna be a plan, like, on where we can go if it doesn't work? Do you know what I mean? Like, if—like, is that gonna be put into it? Is that something that I—I don't know?
Actually, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think I was a fan of it. But I do believe that the proponent put forth an insurance binder to deal with exactly that. Not that it makes it right, wrong, or indifferent.
But it is something being looked at.
The discussion about people's—because water problems have been a subject of discussion on this project since day one.
It's a huge—it's a bad area.
Right. And so that was brought forward.
Mr. Chair, through you to the citizen. One other—if the plan fails, that's a zoning enforcement issue.
Okay.
And Mr. Turner, who is the zoning enforcement officer, would be obligated, if you request it, or you file a complaint.
But he would go towards the zone—okay.
But zoning enforcement is your next—
If—
If something went sideways.
If down the line it doesn't work and what have you, that's where—
Correct.
Right. And—
That's what I wanted to know.
Yes. But so that's your—that's the next step you would go. That's not good, and I'm not saying that—
No, I don't want to do that. But that's just with what was said tonight in, you know, oh, yeah, we can look at the plans. But what happens when the plans don't work? I mean, everybody wants their plans to work.
Right. But I—but just—I was only bringing that up so that you were aware there was a plan. There were—
Yeah.
It's being considered. It's been discussed. They've made multiple revisions to their plan based on this feedback. Now, can we know if it's gonna work?
Right.
Engineers—we have engineering reviews to help us confirm that. Their engineers say it's worked. We've had our engineers review it. I believe the last opinion we had is that it will mitigate any potential runoff. But that's the opinion.
They said it still would be an issue of 1% or 2%, 3%?
Yeah, I have to go back and refresh. But anyway, we're—we take this very seriously. We've considered it. The applicant has revised his plan two or three times to deal with stormwater. Conservation Commission, as you heard, their first ruling was overturned. But it dealt with runoff on one side into the Weeby Anic. Water is been a very big issue, and we're factoring it in. One of the reasons we ask citizens when they make a claim, in order to have a finding that's supportable, if we were to make a negative finding—if, not presupposing. The applicant has the right to know on what basis we made that negative finding. And as you've heard, they have the right to appeal that decision. The court will then look at, how did we make that decision? And the only things we're allowed to look at are the law. Well, broadly stated, the law is the only thing we're allowed to consider. And there are very clear laws. Our zoning bylaws, the state Mass General law. And I made a comment to one of the earlier applicants. Mass General law is very much pro-solar. And we have to understand that. So when citizens—we asked Ms. Hayes—I think she's gone—we need subst— Yeah, but the evidence has to be—
Sustainable.
—sustainable and substantial. I mean, we have to be able to point to a accredited source. If we were to make a find—either way, if we make a finding that's pro the applicant, we still have to make all those findings. And we have to substantiate those findings because citizens groups have the right to appeal as well. As I think members of the Community Water and Land Coalition are probably here tonight. They appeal these decisions if they think we missed something.
Okay.
It's a very thorough process. We don't always like the outcome. But—excuse me, I'm getting passionate. We have—we have to be able to substantiate our finding one way or the other in fairness to everyone.
All right. That's—I mean, I just want to know where do we go when this doesn't work?
Please don't say "it doesn't work," if it—if it doesn't work.
Been there a long time. It's gotten worse. And they're not even there yet.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else before you come back up? I mean, I want to give everybody a chance. Ma'am?
Hello, I'm Kuadietz. I live on 116 Farring Hill Road.
Could you spell your last name?
D-E-E-T-Z.
Okay.
I'm here for multiple different reasons. One being that I'm an enrolled member of the Mashwe Wampanoag tribe, as well as a resident of Wareham and Farring Hill. And since 2019, I've been loosely keeping up with this project. And it's been incredibly alarming to me. One being the entity of the ancient way that I have been known being on that property pretty much my whole time living here, which is separate from the digs that I know that—I'm sorry, I did not catch your name. But the people who are trying to build the solar farm here would have been doing. That is separate. And those are protected under the Aboriginal laws that the federal government provides recognized tribes. They are not to be built upon. They are not to be infringed upon. And they also cannot restrict Indigenous people of their access of those ways. Those have been footpaths that we've been using for thousands of years. And they hold so much cultural significance that there aren't archaeological findings of, other than their entire existence. They're just footpaths from the plain eye. But they hold immense significance to us as a people.
Do we have any kind of documentation to support that?
I don't personally have documentation. I know that there has been—quite a while ago, even prior to our federal recognition in the '40s, Annie had brought to my attention that a man was trying to build his home somewhere around the Farring Hill area. And he had to move where he was putting his home because of where the ancient way is.
But—and I do understand what you're saying. But just like I asked Annie and the others, if you're gonna make some sort of a proclamation or an assertion about this, we need to have documentation to back up the statement.
Okay.
So a source, you know, a copy, something of that nature, so that it's—can be entered into the record.
I can, you know, try and get myself a copy so that way you folks here can have that documentation. But generally, I'm here to not just speak on behalf of the people that live on Farring Hill, but speak for the sustainability that we need to keep living there. Not "we" as residents of Wareham, but Native people. There has been so many efforts throughout history that I imagine many people across this board are well aware of that have—their entire effort has been to push out Native people from historic lands. Now, that's aside from the ancient way.
Well, I think that's aside from this project, too, to be honest.
No, it's not. Because putting up a clear-cut solar farm, again, right in the middle of where woods used to be, where even if it's at this point for you, your panel, a hypothetical ancient way, it would be restricting our access by putting that solar farm there. Now, I participated in a meeting with their lawyers and community members a couple of months back. And even then, I mean, I didn't have my ID on me, so I wasn't going to push the issue. But they weren't allowing me to join them on their walk, which was—which would, in theory, be infringing on my rights again. And I imagine that that would remain true. They'll be adding fencing. They'll be removing that habitat. They'll be taking away forageable forests. They'll be taking away forests that allow for us to cool our homes more efficiently and a whole slew of other things. And I genuinely just want to know why we should put it there. Like, what is keeping the panel from rejecting this solar farm as a whole?
Did you—did you miss what Mr. Schultz said a few minutes ago about the constraints that we have to operate under? If we—I'm gonna put it kind of simply. If we tell Mr. Shanahan and his developers, "No, you can't put it there," we need a legitimate set of reasons based on law, not feelings, but based on law, as to why we said yes or no. Because if we tell him no, we have to defend our decision in court. If we say yes and the citizens sue, we have to defend our decision in court. So it can't be a matter of—it—you know, it's the right thing to do. That's not how we are able to proceed. We have to proceed using the law. Now, right or wrong, good or bad, I can't—you know, I can't say. But that's what we have to do.
Morality aside, I do understand. I really—I have—this is my first time sitting in front of the panel and participating in one of these hearings. So just to clarify what you're saying, the public opinion of not just the residents, but other people in the town is largely irrelevant to the—
No, I think that that is incredibly insensitive.
I'm asking for clarification.
We're here—for three years of listening to the public because we want to make sure that we make the right decision. So the public opinion is extremely relevant, not irrelevant.
But you can only make a decision based on law?
We make a decision based on law and facts.
So public—
Good feelings don't enter into it.
Feelings aside, the opinion of the people that will be directly affected of those things are not the largest factor in the decision, but more of law and scientific evidence?
Everybody's opinion is valued. But it's not—it's not the overwhelming driving force behind how we have to rule. And if you want to come up—and again, if you want to come up and voice your concern, absolutely, we want to hear it. If you're gonna voice a concern about something that exists, whether it be ancient ways, rights, right of travel, whatever that might be, fantastic, bring it to the board. But have something to back up the information. It can't be just something you know, you feel, you heard. It doesn't work that way.
I understand. And I was asking for clarification on that fact, not asserting that you don't care about the opinions of the people here, but just more that your decision had to be based on that. I was asking for clarification on how the board themselves has to base their decision. And if you want to know my personal opinion as a resident of Wareham and as a Mashwe Wampanoag enrolled member, I find that no solar farm being put up in this way could be done sustainably, ethically, or morally. But that's all that I personally have to say.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, one comment to the to the citizens who want public opinion. One way that you record your public opinion is who you vote for—
Absolutely.
—for the—for our legislators. We're not an elected body. We're appointed, we volunteer. But your legislators are the ones who make the law. Excuse me, with the exception of town. Bylaws are within our control and your control and are voted on at town meeting. All these bylaws that we're dealing with have been voted on by the citizens of this town at town meeting. Now, the laws—the federal laws, the state laws that we're dealing with around climate change, alternative energies, solar, your elected officials in the state and in the federal government are the ones who are— That's where you voice your public opinion. All the rest of us, operating at the local level together, have to work our way through that. And to be fair, if we were to just ignore all that, Mr. Shanahan would have a very easy time just overturning it in court. And that isn't what anybody wants, nor what he wants. So that's all I'm trying to say, is we have to operate within the law. Because if we don't, it's gonna get overturned.
I'll have to say something. I've been saying that for three and a half years. The people that represent you are trying to force us to make—to ignore our opinion, to ignore the people, to force us to do this whether we want to or not. So when you go to vote, make sure you look at the record of what they've done on this issue, if it matters that much to you, which I'm sure it does. Look at how they voted, your senators and reps, congressmen. They're against you on this issue in a huge way. Your congressman is one of the worst on this particular issue, if you care. Look up his record.
Just one more point. And I know we're way off track. But there are several bills before the House now to take away our control. before the House now to take away our control. If you care about it... I don't remember the numbers, I'm tracking them, but write to Mark Pacico, and tell him what your opinion is. But they're gonna vote on local control over the solar... Our ability to regulate solar.
They go to take it away from the local and make it mandatory?
Unless you write to them and tell them not to do that. But that's where this is the... Whatever the law says, then we have to implement.
In the next couple of days. This is gonna be effective next week, the 30th. That's when it takes effect.
Okay. Is there anybody else? And, dear God, please, just bring something new, otherwise, just save us, because this public hearing is not gonna be closed tonight.
Eric Lintala, 15 Squirrel Island Road. That's L-I-N-T-A-L-A. It's been several years now that we've been engaged in solar... On this solar project concerning Fearing Hill, and since then, we have all learned a lot more on the issues concerning large-scale projects. The more we learned of the new ever-changing technologies, especially where it came to batteries, battery storage, and materials used in the making of solar panels, the more questions arose. As well as many other important issues, major concerns have been researched and discussed at all these meetings. Climate change is happening, more severe weather is being experienced. When it comes to water runoff, Fearing Hill, in its natural state, as it is right now with all its trees and vegetation, does a good job. Stormwater control can become a major problem where large solar projects are constructed on an incline or a hill. This past January, the residents of Plainville, Massachusetts, experienced major flooding in their homes after a large forest was clear-cut for a solar project constructed on a hill adjacent to their homes. And it's recently reported the flooding issues continue. Concerns for the possibility of massive water runoff on Fearing Hill were addressed by Atlantic Engineering. Their updated plan was to create a stone-lined trench directing any water runoff into the protected adjacent wetlands and conservation area. This did not sit well with the Conservation Commission or the citizens of Wareham. Large-scale ground-mounted solar projects is an industry and should be properly located in zoned areas that are already cleared of trees and not in residential neighborhoods. This message finally seems to be getting through to state officials. State representatives have proposed, quote, "An act to encourage solar development on buildings and disturbed land. Massachusetts is building a robust renewable energy infrastructure, but to the extent possible, such development should not be at the expense of irreplaceable forests and natural lands, which provide good... Which provide carbon sequestration, clean water, flood, and erosion control, and good quality of life for Massachusetts residents," end quote. Both solar and our forests go hand-in-hand to help our environment. They should work together, they should exist together. It makes no sense in cutting down our forests when both can contribute for the greater good. Everything that has been discussed and argued over the past several years comes down to one important fact: location. This project is an endangerment on so many levels at this location. No one person, no one of the many committees or organizations that have responded on this project have come forward in favor of it. In fact, everyone, everyone, has said no. There are just too many uncertainties and too many unknowns. Along with many citizens of Wareham, the Conservation Commission clearly stated sound facts and voted to deny this project. It's time to take a stand for the health, safety, and welfare for the citizens of Wareham. Please vote to deny this project. Thank you.
I may respond ever so briefly, Mr. Chairman. I have to object to the allegation that no one has, quote, "supported" this project. We brought this project to the town of Wareham. The town of Wareham has considered it the planning board level, the Conservation Commission level. The planning board did render its opinion, and the DEP, an impartial regulatory agency, took five months to review that decision and overturned it.
The planning board? You mean the Commission...
Conservation, my apologies. I'd also indicate that, at the town's mandate, we paid for the town to have its consulting engineer, Charles Rowley, literally ride this project on a weekly basis from beginning to end, when he signed off on it. At the town's request, and I think it's unique in the town's history, we agreed to pay nearly $100,000 for the town to engage a hydrogeologist to study this project, and ended up revising our plans, reducing the size of our project to accommodate each and every recommendation that he made. So, I think it's totally inaccurate to get up and state your opinion as if it's fact. Mr. Lintala has his opinions. He had his opinion on the historical nature of the site, and you saw what the Mass Historical Commission did with that opinion. It's easy to state an opinion, but if you're not gonna substantiate it, it's just an opinion.
Yep, agreed, and I've already... I've already made that statement, that, you know, if you're gonna state a source or a fact, that you need documentation to back it up. But I think in Mr. Lintala's case, this was just an opinion, and he is entitled to voice his opinion.
I agree.
And, Mr. Chair, I... Mr. Shanahan, I have my opinion, and he has his opinion.
Yep, understood. Thank you, sir.
So, the gentleman... Oh, man.
And Nancy.
Nancy.
Well, he's been trying, let's...
I'm really the last one.
No, that's okay.
How you doing? My name's Mike Zatek. I'm...
Yeah.
It's probably easier for me to just talk loud. I'm a local honey producer.
Could you spell your last name, Mike?
Z-A-T-E-K.
Thank you.
I've lived in West Wareham my whole life. I'm a local honey producer. As my business, I have about 100 hives, based out of West Wareham, and I'm throughout most towns along the South Coast. I'm in Wareham, Barber, Middleboro. I jump over to Dartmouth, Westport, Berkeley. I'm all over the place, but the core of my operations is in West Wareham. A lot of... I have several bee yards that are, like, pretty much neighbors with the project, and I just wanted to voice my concern that a lot of forage that's... How many acres is the project?
About 26.
Stone 18. 18, okay. Started out at 26, right?
Yeah, there's a lot of really good, unique forage in that area. Last year, I made 2,500 pounds of honey, and if you multiply the 1,300-odd calories per pound, I made something like 3.5 million calories out of the forage that's, like, in that forest. So, I'm gonna say it's a food security issue, like, I'm in here seven of this business, and these are 3 million new calories that never existed, nobody else is doing this right now. So, that would really cut my legs out from under me, it would cut anybody trying to do... For me as a business, the bees, I'll make less honey, anybody trying to do bees is gonna have more of a struggle, and everybody knows that bees are struggling, so the last thing we need to do is destroy more forage. It's pretty foolish. And that's pretty much it. Yeah, we're gonna... There's really good forage in there. I could make a comprehensive list of species. The inkberry is a big one that's hot right now. Poison ivy, actually, believe it or not, is very important. The clethera sweet pepper bush, that's huge. I wouldn't even be able to do my business without that plant. Wouldn't be able to do my business without that plant. And they're gonna... There's... That 29 acres is probably mostly clethera. And so, that's pretty much my concern. I don't know if anyone ever brought that to the table before.
I will give you your due credit, Mike. That is new.
And do you...
I know nobody else is doing beekeeping like I'm doing, so...
Right. Well, I mean, I understand your concern for the, you know, for the area, for the bees to go and do what they need to do.
And more broadly, I mean, there's three large projects, all within this area, that are gonna impact your business. I don't know what... I don't know what to do about that.
It's where I've been my whole life, but, you know, bees are mobile. If you guys destroy the... I know, not us. You just... If you approve to destroy the forage, I can pack up and leave and make those millions of calories elsewhere. But, yeah, that's unfortunate. It'll just... It'll be a real loss for the area. A real loss for the area. And I'll comment on the PFAS. The federal government says they're safe, but the same federal government that said cigarettes was safe for how many decades?
I... We've... The only point we were making is, evidence has been presented, unless you have new evidence, you're...
This is my new evidence. I don't have anything written down, but you want to go into the bee yard? You want to see how far you can go?
Well, if you could...
90-pound honey box?
No, no, I believe you're producing it. If you could show... You mentioned some species that the bees rely on, and I... It went past, but I...
You want to go on a hike? I'll show you.
No, but if you have a survey of the... Of that plant in the area... I'm trying... I'm making this up, because this is new. You could...
I'm picking up my whole business as a...
No, 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 I meant if...
Just, Mike, let him...
I'm trying to say, if you say, "The amount of this plant in the area is this, and it's critical to my business," and you could substantiate that, that's a fact.
Right.
And then we could...
Then we can enter that in, and consider it.
And consider it. I don't know if impact... I have to look at the bylaw in terms of how it says "impact to other businesses," but there may be a... Something then we could build on, but we need...
Some species off the top of my head, like inkberries, like 200, 250 pounds of honey per acre. There's acres of that in there, there's...
But we need to know... You're saying that there's acres of it, we need to know that they're...
That it's actually there.
That it's there.
And Mr. Chairman...
If I had to survey myself, like, who's gonna do it?
Well, I don't know how... That's a different question. I can't answer that. This is new evidence.
Yeah, there. I mean, the proof is in the hives, I'm pulling the honey.
Okay.
The proof's in the hives.
All right. I understand your assertion.
Carl, go ahead.
Is there anything else, Mike?
Yeah, also, these comments about compliance. The town of Milton is non-complying with the state law to do multifamily housing, so we don't need to comply with this. We really don't. This whole... This country's built on non-compliance with huge government. So, you guys, you don't need to. You really don't.
All right. Appreciate your opinion, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just so this isn't a totally one-sided subject, because...
Well, I'm gonna... You can say what you need to say, but I'm gonna put an end to it.
Well, if you put an end to all the rest of it, I'll gladly go silent.
I...
You don't need to be watched every time. You have to factor...
Nancy? Yes, Nancy will be the last person commenting tonight, where we're not closing the public hearing, and we're burning time, and we have other agenda items. I can't let this just continue on and on and on, especially where we're not getting a whole lot of brand-new information.
Thank you. Nancy McHale, 87 Fearing Hill Road. M-C-H-A-L-E. Thank you. Hearing people voice their concerns tonight, and knowing how much data, how much information is on the planning board site, I know that I, myself, have amassed, like, that much, and you guys have at least that much or more.
More.
It is very difficult to look on the planning site and, through no fault of anyone, but to figure out what plan, and what stormwater plan, and what is actually now on the table. Because there's May 17th of '21, there's a revised June 14th of '22, and then after that, in July of '22, there's more stormwater stuff to be considered. So, it's really hard for a citizen who hasn't been as entrenched in this as I have been to figure out what's being considered. So, it would be helpful, and I know that Mr. Shanahan is probably not my biggest fan, but if there's some way that a letter could be written, or information pointing to what those final, final documents are, that are, you know, on the table right this minute, that would perhaps be helpful.
I think with their public records, you could probably go into the planning office and ask for the document.
That being said, I don't know that anyone has stood under a solar panel looking for shade, but I know many people have stood under their trees, looking for shade and a bit of wind to break this oppressive heat, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah.
To what date?
To what date? It was a request by the applicant to continue the public hearing to the first...
First meeting in August?
In August.
August 12.
August 12. Do we have a motion to...
I move that we continue the hearing on 12/23, Fearing Hill, to the meeting of August 12. Second?
You have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett, all in favor. Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you very much. Have a good, happy 4th of July.
Thank you, Joe.
12.
I moved the other two down to... But before we get involved in County Road, I want to take five. Yeah. Okay, everybody, before we move on, we're just gonna take a quick five-minute bio-break. Okay, everyone? If we could quiet down, we're gonna get back to work. Next up is... I'm sorry. Hello? Thank you. Next up is 12-23, 370 County Road LLC, site plan review and special permit. So, we're working strictly off of what's uploaded to the site? We have a whole bunch of folders for stuff we're not working on. It's fellowship.
All right. You ready to go? Attorney Gillian Morton, M-O-R-T-O-N, here for the applicant.
And I'm Richard Rehm, prime engineering, chief engineer. We prepared the site plans.
So, just to refresh your memory on where we were at, we were here last meeting. Hopefully, everyone had time to review all our narrative and everything, and our engineer, and I'll let you go into the particulars.
Hey, excuse me. Mike? Mike? He left. I was gonna say he...
He's still there.
Sir, given the concerns you expressed, I think this application also affects you. I was suggesting you might want... Yes?
You guys don't want me keeping Wareham, do you?
I'm just... I was inviting you to hear the testimony.
I gotta leave before I go, Dust.
Okay, thank...
This is madness.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was giving you the opportunity to hear the testimony.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. So, we had our plans reviewed by Mr. Cordero, and we did receive that peer review back, and it looked like everything was handled on his point of view, so I'll let you go into the revisions that we went through, particularly the fire department, I know that that was a concern.
Right. The fire captain basically wanted a wider road and a durable, all-season road, so we walked the entire site with the fire representatives, and they agreed that the one area where we're crossing between the old reservoir and the old bog, that that could be... be pinched down somewhat, so there'd be no need for a wetlands impact. So we prepared the plan, submitted it to the fire captain, and he wrote a letter to the planning board saying, yes, that these plans, as written, were fine. It was then submitted to Mr. Cudero, and he reviewed it and has given you the letter saying it was okay. We also added to the narrative to focus on the points as far as habitat and the like, that because the existing pine forest is mostly mature trees, there are very few shrubs, very little herbaceous growth, there's not good cover for shelter for the animals, and there's not good food source. So we gave you in the narrative a table summarizing how, because we're doing large pollinator fields with shrubs surrounding it, we're providing the food source, we're providing the cover, and so the result of the solar field is a significantly improved habitat for the wildlife. In terms of runoff, we again did some revised calculations showing that widening that roadway wasn't going to increase the rate or the volume of runoff to the wetlands. We're observing that wetlands corridor with a buffer zone so that there's good north, south, east, west, undisturbed transit points. So again, in the narrative, we've gone point by point on every zoning criteria that you have, showing that we're meeting the criteria.
Phil, could you weigh in on your review? I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance. I never saw the document. I do understand we got it, but I overlooked it, so...
To say that would improve habitat is nuts. I walk by a solar array with my dog three, four times a week. I've never seen one animal ever in a decade in that field. Everywhere around it, sure, but in that area, never once. Just want to say that on the record.
Yeah, right now, it doesn't have much habitat value, and by planting shrubs and herbaceous that grow berries and the like, there'll be a food source and there'll be shelter for the critters as well.
Do we have a planting schedule?
Yes.
We do, and we also provided a pollinator seed mix, which I was gonna modify my question, and perhaps Jane could help, but Sam was speaking. I do have a question on that.
Go ahead.
Oh, so, and Jane, if you could help me here. We provided you with a pollinator seed mix, but we didn't consider... And you heard the testimony from Mike, the beekeeper, previously, which this is the first time we heard that testimony. I walked the site with you. I didn't see any... I don't know what inkberry looks like, but I didn't see any low ground cover in the area. Is inkberry a possible plant that could be placed in the pollinator field? I don't know what inkberry looks like.
I actually keep bees myself, so I thought that was very interesting that he pointed out inkberry as being something that was of high food value for the bees. What I know of inkberry... I'm trying to think of it flowering, and I don't recall it flowering. It's got to, though. So I don't know the answer to that.
So, go ahead, because I was gonna get back to the applicant in a minute, but go ahead.
But I think we should... I haven't had a chance to review the planting schedule, which I need to do.
So through you, Mr. Chair, back to the applicant. If we wanted... If this were to be approved, please, I'm not trying to project. If we wanted to work with you on the plantings to be more bee-friendly, is that something we could do?
I obviously am not speaking for the applicant. Like, I haven't spoke to him, but I do know we also have the attorney who represents the landowner here, and reading that she actually keeps bees, too. So absolutely, I think that that would be a wonderful idea to be incorporated within the plans.
Okay. I don't know. We'll probably need some help from...
So I would add that bees don't necessarily have a limited diet. The bees that we keep, you can get the honey tested, and they can tell you exactly what the bees are eating.
Well, that was one of the reasons, as I was asking Mike... I'm gonna call him Mike, because... To stay is because I was going to try and elicit more information if there were, even on the other application, if we could do things to mitigate that. So you're willing, if we could figure out what that might be? Conceptually, you're willing. I...
We have specified on the landscape plan a pollinator mix...
Right.
Which is specifically suited for this area, for pollinators, which aren't only bees. There are numerous other pollinators.
Yeah. And we provided a standard, which I think back in the beginning, but we didn't specifically consider bees in coming up with that mix.
Yeah. He, Mike, for the previous project, mentioned clethra and mentioned inkberry, and neither of those were what are feeding my bees. And so, you know, there's a whole array of different things that bees can feed on.
Okay.
So that he mentioned those two plants, those are good feeder plants, but not the only ones.
So we have two regions. One is under the solar panels, and some of the solar panels are only 30 inches off the ground, so a clethra would start shading that. So we're mostly successional field, herbaceous growth, under the panels and between the panels. Outside of the fence, there's quite a wide area, and that area is shown as being planted with shrubs, and again, food-bearing, berry-bearing, and...
Okay.
They can be sheltered.
So in listening to citizens' concerns, we could work with the applicant to perhaps mitigate or improve the bee habitat, if that became a thing we should do. You're willing to work with us on that? I don't know what the answer is in terms of what the mix would be, but...
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
It is common practice for the Conservation Commission to approve a, you know, a planting plan, but finding that, you know, when these applicants go to the nursery, maybe those plants aren't available, maybe they can't find them in the right size. So it's... I would say it's a normal condition that the applicant can work with someone from the department to find suitable alternatives. You know, that's something you could consider in your conditioning.
Okay, great. So, but having heard the concern and fact that he's in the neighborhood of this project and Mr. Churchill's project and the Ferringill project, perhaps we can do some things to mitigate any harm that might come to his business by providing habitat? And you've acknowledged... I don't want to drag this out. You've acknowledged...
Yeah, it's just a whole other can of worms, too. Like, we're just trying to keep local. That was one of the big things. But I'm sure we're gonna be able to work with you, whatever plantings necessary.
Yeah. So it just came up tonight. That's why I...
So a follow-up question on that. You just said that the panels, and I'm seeing the little section diagram of the panels, that there's a 30-inch maximum height at the low side of the panels. And I see that the pollinator mix that you've listed is a four-foot pollinator mix, so that's gonna have exactly the problem that you just mentioned of shading.
Yeah, one of the things that happens in the solar panels is you get more lush growth under the panels, believe it or not. The sun is fairly hard in between the panels, and so you see lower growth in between. Underneath the panels, you see the dense lush growth, so...
I do actually believe that because I was at the YMCA just the other day and parked under the solar panel canopy that they've got and saw the shade line of it at midday, and it was lush grass underneath it and dry, crispy grass outside it. But that's got some significant height. That's way up, you know, above, so cars can park underneath it. So there's enough distance for rain to get in there. Anyway, keep going. Sorry.
Phil, if you could...
Sure. Good evening, Phil Cudero Allen and major associates. Just a quick summary, Mr. Chair, members of the board. At the last meeting, the applicant had submitted a new set of plans that was not reviewed by my office, and they were largely relegated to, as Mr. Riome noted, the addition of the fire access road, the widening to accommodate the fire department. So we have reviewed those. There were no substantive effect of the widening. We did ask them to revise some of their drainage calculations that were not originally submitted to the board. They did that. We reviewed those materials, and everything appears in order, that we don't have any additional comments that we would bring in front of the board for consideration as of this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I know the attorney is here who represents the landowner. Just add some more information.
Thank you.
Is that okay? Or would you like to wait till public comment?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Good evening. Hi, Rich. So you're in the ears. I'm Bob Moore, Attorney Robert Moore, Matta Poizette.
Can you spell your name, please?
Siggen, please.
Please spell your name.
M.O.O.R.E.
Thank you. And we're not picking on you. We're asking everybody to do that, so...
I noticed. It's all right.
Well, it's because the young lady taking you...
I was gonna say R.O.B.E.R.T., and I decided...
Some people do. Some people do. That's okay. No, we're just trying to make sure the minutes are accurate and...
Patricia Zimmer and her daughter Kate are the landowners. Patricia would be here if she could, and she can't, so she asked me to stop by a second, please. Okay. I've known them for a long time. I do their family business, personal attorney. I also knew Patricia's husband, Phil Zimmer. He was on the Matta Poizette Police Department with me before he passed away. He served very honorably. He left Patricia and Kate. Those are the only two involved, to his landowners. This property's been in the family for a long time. Patricia's maiden name was Haju, and that's a popular name when it comes to growing cranberries. The decision to dedicate part of the land to solar was not an easy decision for them. They tried the last few years to have somebody manage the bogs there, and that just hasn't worked out at all. And Patricia, you said she's on Zoom? Well, she's not getting any younger, so she's not gonna be able to manage these bogs personally herself. She's not gonna be able to do that at all. She's very aware of the different concerns that people have, from ancient ways to trees and animals and so forth. But she believes, along with other people, that the use of this land, the way it's spelled out, the way it's done by Rich Riome's engineering firm and presented by Jillian, is the least offensive use of the property. It'll allow her also, and it's funny that she told me, because I've been asking her, well, what are you gonna do with the rest of the land? She says, well, we're really interested in growing trees and increasing our bees. And I didn't hear about the bees here. I was at another meeting, and I've been on Zoom also, until tonight. The gentleman was very articulate about raising bees. The only point I'm trying to make is this. This is a rather small project for the town, but it's a huge project for this family. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any input from the board? Mike?
No, I'm just amazed that we're gonna do something for the little critters.
Oh, can I just add one thing? You were asking several times, is the landowner willing to plant these things? Absolutely. Absolutely, she is. I think that's a wonderful suggestion. And Rich and I will be out there personally planting them.
Gathering the honey.
So just as an aside, I believe, so we have conservation also to have that go through and hopefully be approved, but we're looking to, you know, possibly get the flavor of the board for a vote if, you know, if they're open to that tonight. Or if they need more information, we're more than happy to provide that.
Through you to Mr. Farady. Do we have the order of conditions yet from the concom?
No, they're coming before us, I believe, on July 3rd.
Okay, so that is a prerequisite for us to vote.
Is that within the bylaw to have an order of conditions?
Yes, yes. It is Article 50... I'll find the exact sighting.
It is.
I'll look for it while we're sitting here.
Can it be a vote pending the order?
We can't close the public hearing.
Yeah. Can't vote till the hearing's closed. The hearing can't be closed until conservation weighs in. So unfortunately, it's not something that'll happen tonight. So, Mike, you're excited about the bees?
Well, yeah. You learn something new every day, you know?
Excellent. And all, and the...
I like the bee guy. He's got a good attitude. And the thing is, I think Sam said it himself, we have to challenge the government. The government's shoving this shit down our throat, and it's not good.
No, we have to make sure we do everything right. That's...
Well, the thing is, you know, it's time for an uprising. That's what it is. I mean, this town's getting... It's becoming solar city. You know, we're easy pickings, I guess. It's a shame. It really is. Really is.
I agree with Mike. There also is another way of doing this, aside from everything that was said earlier, is go to court. We can set precedents here, not follow the rules.
Carl, I got it. I got it. I'm sorry.
Okay. Sorry, I just wanted Carl...
And go to court.
Yep.
1551, Section 2.
The federal government's been wrong before, but the state's been wrong before. You know, like I said, and that's part of our job, is to protect the people, and it's time for the people to get together on a bandwagon, and I'll be right with them. It's time to fight. You know, I feel bad for Mrs. Zimmer because personally, I know her, you know, she's good people, and she's trying to survive like everybody else. You know, cranberry business is going to shit. So... I'm all set, Mike.
Jane?
I'm good.
I asked my question about the bees, and I thank Attorney Morton for her article on...
Ancient ways.
Ancient ways, yes.
To explain the YMCA panels, I live up the street a little bit. The issue is sand. In my yard, wherever the shade is, the grass grows awesome. Where the sun is irrigated every day, it dies.
Because the water goes right through.
Right through. I had my irrigation service the other day. I said, is there anything you could do? He said, no. Said an hour every day, it still dies. Doesn't matter. The foundation next to me was dug, topsoil, sand, 12 feet down. Also, as far as the plantings and the grass and all... I know West Wareham's a little bit different, but unless you irrigate it, it won't grow. Simple as that. I could take you to a solar array, nothing growing. They did their best. They planted the right thing. Nothing there. I walk it a few times a week. There's nothing there. It's dead because there's no water. There's runoff, but it's not enough. And I can take you there and show you. It's all dead. There's nothing there. That's all tonight.
So, so on that subject, if we condition the project for plantings, and the condition is that the plantings have to be maintained, and the plantings die...
Like they did at Toby Road. I've been saying this for a while. If you don't irrigate it, it doesn't grow. If it's been there for a lot of years and the roots are down six feet, maybe in West Wareham...
I can tell you that there's irrigation at the...
I can tell you that there's irrigation at the YMCA.
I'm sorry?
I can tell you that there's irrigation at the YMCA.
So what...
And it's only the grass in the shadows, in the shade.
And I have irrigation as well.
And I can tell you that that site is nothing but sand. There is not a rock the size of your fist on that site.
Right up the street.
So one of the good things is, this is a previously operating cranberry farm. Cranberries require irrigation of a sort. There's water available, so that's something to consider. There's a big pond that's not that far from at least one of the fields. I don't know how far. I can't remember how far the second field...
How did the existing bogs get irrigated? There has to be a...
Yeah, there's pumps.
Our client actually has her hand raised.
Yeah, we walk by pumps. There's a big pond, so I don't know if that's something...
Well, this is a point of difference, too. This is the landowner who is, you know, what we always say in zoning, and, you know, if it's owned by the person, you have a two-family, then the pride of ownership, too, right? So my client's leasing the land, but she's living there.
Yep.
She should be all set.
Okay. Patricia, you can speak now.
Patricia, I think you are muted. You'll have to find the unmute button on the lower part of the screen.
Okay, did that do it?
Yep, that did it.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for my technical non-abilities here. There were a couple of things that I wanted to say. One of them is that I do have irrigation systems there. I have the new bog, which is located close to one of the potential solar fields, has a sand component, and it also has a clay layer, which makes it retain water, which can be very helpful in growing things. And I would like to say that I definitely want to encourage planting of things for the bees. I went to bee school many, many, many years ago, and I remember them telling us about the yearly cycle of what bees would look for. And I was surprised to learn that they go to maple trees in March. For those tassels that grow up at the tops, that's their first supply of food. And through the months, they have plants that they go to. One of them that I was always really impressed with, because I have a lot of it, and I would plant more, is the sweet pepper bush, which comes in in August.
Clathrow. That's the clathrow.
I'm sorry?
That's the clathrow that the gentleman who was...
Yes, that he was speaking about, yes. And it grows, I know I could get it to grow. I could get more of it to grow. And one of the reasons that we wanted to do this project is because even if we used the entire nine acres, it would help support the other 51 acres and keep it in agriculture in some shape or form, whether it's growing trees and shrubs, or growing lavender, or growing something. The passive income from solar would allow me to pay the taxes on the 60 acres. So I will do anything and everything that I can to help this project and plant things that would encourage it. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other input? No other input?
No, I... Yeah. One question. Initially, we were told this is a working farm. Is that correct?
It's not a working farm in terms of 61A, where they're producing so much crop per year, but they call it the farm, and they want to keep it producing in some shape or form.
So what are they gonna grow? I mean, if it's a farm, they're growing something.
Well, they have the bogs, and Attorney Moore mentioned bees, blueberries, potentially trees, like Christmas trees.
She just mentioned lavender.
Lavender, yeah. Yeah, it's been in the family for how long?
A long time.
Yeah.
All right, I'm done.
Being a public camera, is there anybody from the gallery that would like to step forward?
There is one person online. You can pull him now.
Is that...
Who? Are we there?
I'm here. Oh, I'm sorry.
Cool. Hi, yeah. Mike Pata, Concerned Neighbor from Calva. I just wanted to bring a moment of experience, if that helps, because I have built a three-acre solar project on a cranberry bog and have managed to keep the bog alive by just holding back water that naturally flowed, kept all of the pollinating plants, including most of the cranberries, alive. I've got thriving beehives on my property, and I have found it to have more wildlife than ever before, because I'm not there managing the bog. Plus the fact that I'm not using chemicals and pesticides and herbicides and fungicides all over the bog, I think it's been better for a lot of animals, and especially pollinators, to have the bog in the situation it's in. So I just see a lot of people who have questions about these things, and my experiences show me that it's been great for small animals, critters. I even had mallard ducks, which I've never seen a mallard duck nest in my life, and if you've never seen one, it's the coolest thing. But I had mallard ducks nesting under my panels. And you've probably seen my bog. It's right in the center of Calva, next to the school. It's kind of tucked in trees now, but the project has gone excellent. The sponsor, Eric Chrisler, was a man of his word on every level, and did not pay me to say this or to listen in. But I'm just, I'm curious, as small cranberry growers who are trying to find ways to hold on to their property, for me, it was very helpful to have some solar income on the side to keep the rest of my farm and my greenhouse going. And I just thought you should hear from someone who has actually done this, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Through you to the previous speaker, I do have a question. Can you tell us what the height of the panels on the low side is above the plantings?
On my bog, they are about 30 inches. I'd say that's about right.
Okay.
Yeah?
Just curious. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, I had made an assumption that our transcriber would be able to see your name on the screen, but could you spell your last name?
Last name is P.A.D.U.C.H.
Okay, thank you.
And through you to the speaker, could you give us the address of your bog, please, and your solar field?
Yeah, they keep changing the name on the street, but it's the very center of Calva, right after the pizza place and right after the town hall on your left, just before the school. The address has changed several times, and I'm trying to think what it's called, and it might be 69 Main Street. I'm sorry about that, but they keep changing the number. For years, it was just 00 Main Street.
Thank you. I'll try and drive by.
Okay, feel free.
This project isn't proposing any solar on cranberry bogs, just for the record.
Correct.
This was determined to be a wet bog, and it went all the way up to the commissioner of DEP, and they said, "Yep, he's farming. He's growing vines underneath solar panels." So he said, "Absolutely, you can do solar panels on a wet bog, as long as you keep farming it."
Thank you. Interesting.
That's an interesting harvesting.
Is there a minimum crop yield?
All he's doing is selling the vines. In other words, it's not getting enough sunlight to generate the berries with enough sugar in them. But what he's doing is, every other year, he can harvest the vines and sell it to other bogs, and the value of those is about double what the value of the berries are that you harvest annually. So it turned out very well for him. We did that project years ago.
That's interesting. The SMART, is this under the SMART program? Because the SMART program requires a yield of berries, I believe, right?
I think this was done before the SMART program.
I thought there was a yield of berries, too. But there's no number.
Well, it's a, there's some... Okay, but he's not growing berries, he's growing vines, which is another product. I mean, it's interesting.
I'd be curious to know how the harvest works under the panels with all of the supports.
Well, he was saying they weren't sweet enough, so...
Right, right. So that's not the...
You harvest every other year.
Yeah. But harvesting berries would be difficult.
Yeah.
It would be, yeah. Okay, is there...
Well, another thing we're learning. Every time we have a hearing here, we learn something.
We learn more, yeah. Is there anybody else online or in the room?
Mr. Lintala.
Eric Lintala, 15 Squirrel Island Road, L.I.N.T.A.L.A. It's been interesting that we've learned, we've heard about bees this evening. The gentleman, Mike, that was here earlier, his take on it was the material, the vegetation, it's on Ferring Hill, supplements his bees. And now we're talking about, and it's interesting, these so-called meadows under the solar panels. You know, they grow so much, there's flowers and grass. But I do hope that we're not going to use the bee issue as the God-savior for solar fields now, that we can plant flowers and there'll be bees. The existing forest that's up there right now supplements a whole lot of wildlife. For millennia, it's been up there. It's, so I have to, it just really bothers me to see, have a comparison made that the meadow is going to be a much better habitat than the forest. That makes no sense. The forest itself, too, there's, there are these, a question of the bogs that are on the property now, I haven't seen anything grow in those for as long as I've been here. Are they functioning bogs, or are they defunct bogs?
They're not functioning.
All right, so, and it's a nice open area. I know those bogs. And so we have a forest, we have these bogs. It's too bad the solar field can't go over these defunct bog areas. Maybe it's switching around. You're gonna remove a forest, maybe a forest could be planted in these non-functional bogs. I like the idea of replanting something. But this forest itself, where those bogs are, where that pond is back there, this forest is up high. It's not down there at the water level. And you put plantings, and I go back to Mr. Charles Rowley, his report on the Ferring Hill. He made a distinct comment that because of up on a hill, and this is elevated, this forest, you remove the forest, you plant grass, I mean, those roots aren't going to go down to that waterline. The trees that are there do. But that meadow, or that upper plain, it's gonna dry up. There's no water source except for what dry, what comes down. So planting anything and it surviving is gonna be interesting, be tricky. I feel, you know, for the family, I understand, you know, trying to make a living, and it's always bothered me, to some extent, to come in and challenge someone's, you know, the use of someone's property, where they're telling them not to cut down their trees or something. But still, people who own these type of properties have to understand what's going on, you know, with climate and everything right now, too. And there are zoning issues. So it's, I think there's, how this has been described, I don't see it as a truthful thing. It's up on a high thing. Anything you plant that's gonna be grass or meadow, those plants, you'll be surprised at they survive. That sun, they'll be baked to death. The sand, and it's, if you walk the property, you've seen, I mean, just north of the property, the sandbank, I mean, they've been removing sand there in the past. It's all sand under there. It's dry. So it will be a challenge for this thing to survive, other than if the panels go, and they'll be there, but it will... What's being proposed, that's a very big uncertainty, what's gonna happen. And the habitat itself, you know, it's, you know, there's a lot more out there than just the bees. Like I said, that forest is a host of, for habitat animals and others, and the birds. Sam brought up, I have a solar field behind me, and I'm out there a lot. There's not a critter over there. I mean, it's, you have a heat dome over these solar panels. There's no birds are gonna be over there. Some animal, I don't, I don't know. Everything's moved. The deer have moved, even the turtles have moved from this area. So I think it's very questionable as to what's stated as how these, you know, this six, eight-inch height of a fence up, and it's gonna serve that purpose to have a healthy habitat for all the animals that live there. The last thing I want to say is, we're, when we cut, we're changing things. We go in, we cut down a large forest, we're making a major change to that habitat in all regards. Everything to do with water, animals, you name it. And we're doing that a lot now. We're cutting down vast forests. I did bring up the state. There are officials now talking about, we gotta stop doing that. We have to try to stop doing that. So there are people in the government that are listening to a lot of us, who are talking about that. And hopefully, that'll get some running room. So that's the other thing to think about. We really make a big change. Anytime you put in a parking lot, you take down a lot of trees, things, you're really changing something, and that's not talked about too often. We need to have a specialist to talk about that. Anyhow, that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Okay. At this point, I guess I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to the meeting of August 8.
Second.
We have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor? Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
That would be August 12.
12. Oh, wait a minute. Oh, I was looking at...
And my motion, August 12.
August 12. I was looking at the wrong month. August 12.
Aye.
Sam?
Yeah, aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Mr. Chair, a question to the listener for you. When you introduce the articles, kind of like we did about the forest...
Yeah, I should do that for this one.
Is your mic on?
In that, is that where we came up with the fourth great cutting? Is that, we, I remember hearing testimony that there have been four great cuttings in the northeast, in Massachusetts, in the southeast. Was that in those articles, or I...
I don't know that it was.
But there have been clear cutting in Massachusetts, and this is, would be the fourth. So it's happened in the past, and we've survived, but I would be interested, I don't remember where that reference was. I'll have to go back. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
August 12.
The 12.
Meetings in July.
Next up, 5-24, Christian Tobia, definitive subdivision plan. Five Crooked River Road and zero Crooked River Road. I would entertain a motion, oh, we do have somebody.
We have to read the thing, but do we have, Josh, do we have any materials on this? Mr. Tobia, did you submit a new application?
Yes, yep. Yep, it's always submitted.
Okay, well, thank you. We've got it. All right, so you need to read the public hearing.
It was for the renewal of the subdivision. Nothing's changed.
Yeah, we just want to...
We just gotta keep the records clean.
Okay, no problem.
That's what this whole thing is about.
Wareham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on June 24th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. in Room 520 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition 5-24 for a definitive subdivision plan of land of Tobia Way, under the requirements of MGL Chapter 41, Section 81L, to Christian E. Tobia of 5 Crooked River Road, Wareham, Mass., proposing a two-lot subdivision located at 5 Crooked River Road and Zero Crooked River Road, Wareham, Mass., assessors map 40 lots 1002, 1020, 1021, and 1022 in the R. 30 zoning district. Wareham Planning Board, Michael King, Chairman. First notice was June 6th of 2024. Second notice was June 13th of 2024.
I move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor? Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. The floor is yours, sir.
Okay, all right. I'm here to, just for the renewal of my subdivision for the Zero Crooked River Road. Crooked River Road, to put a single-family, um, house on. It's been engineered, it was submitted, I resubmitted everything that you asked. And I'm here tonight just for you to go over it and look at it.
Thank you.
It expired, I don't know if you remember.
No, I remember.
Nothing's changed on the plan, everything's, nothing has changed at all, the only issue was that the plan expired. As far as the plans, anything, nothing has changed at all.
While you're reading, Mr. Chair, through you to the planning office, Mr. Farady, did you review the application for completeness?
I did not, no.
Mr. Cudaro, were you given an opportunity to review the plan for completeness? No. All right, we're just going to look at it then.
Yeah, no, absolutely. There should have been a, um, updated, um, from J.C. Engineering, they just updated the dates and so forth that you had requested. There was a, a letter.
The tax verification form is signed, but there's no, there's no detail, just a blank form with a signature on it.
I can't even find it.
Is that, is it taxable?
Yeah. I'm sure it's in there.
Uh, through you to the applicant, did you get an updated tax form signature for Mr. Foster?
I did not, I was, um, I submitted everything that I was advised to submit.
Oh, no, I, we're just.
Okay, all right, all right.
There's no, uh, no accusation here.
Okay, my taxes are paid.
Well, there's a tax verification form.
It's signed, but there's no, there's no information.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, there, I got it, verifies that, wait, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, and it's dated properly, so it's an updated form, unfortunately, it doesn't say your name or.
Of course.
The name of the property.
Oh, it would be the same name presumably, but yeah, it doesn't have it in there.
Okay.
I don't know if I have a copy of that.
Yeah, all the date stamps, Mr. Churchill has dated his date stamps on the plans. This was previously approved, is that correct?
Correct, yep, when it was, it expired.
No, I remember that. When, when was it originally approved?
2022.
22.
Yeah, I think it was 2022.
So the subdivision rules and regs haven't changed, the bylaws haven't changed in any way, I, I, I'm just catching up.
No, absolutely, yep.
You did exactly what we asked you, so, no.
It expired by like a month.
No, no, I, I remember it, yes. Yeah, so I don't think there's any new, there were any changes to the bylaws or the subdivision rules and regs.
Not that I can think of, no. Not that would affect his property.
Public hearing, the public weigh-in?
Uh, why, just, uh, we can, uh, okay, yes, we can. Anybody, no one from the public?
Is, being a public hearing, is there anybody either present or on Zoom that would like to comment? Hearing none and seeing none would entertain a motion to.
If, if we close the public hearing, we can't get a signed copy of the tax form.
That's true, that would give, that would give Phil a chance to, to review the, the runoff, runoff, because he hasn't seen any of this.
Mr. Cudaro, could you come forward, I have a question. We're not trying to make this any more difficult.
No problem. Yes.
Would there have been any changes in stormwater or runoff or anything that would, since the time the original application, that would be of concern?
No.
Do you, do you think there's any value in you looking at the revised plan set?
I mean, I could look at it for consistency, you know, to make sure it checks all the same boxes, but that's really about it. Happy to do it, if you'd like, very informally and very quickly.
I'm, I'm.
I mean, if, if the regulations haven't changed since the time that it was approved, I don't know if we really, do we really need to go down that road?
What, anything's changed?
No. Yeah, no, no, I, I understand, normally, if, if everything had been, it's what had just been an extension request. The only, the only issue is that signature on that form.
Right. So keep the public hearing open, have them get that form filled out.
Can, can you just go back and get them to put your name on that form that they signed? Mr. Foster's form?
Sure.
You know which form we're talking about?
Is it, uh, let's see. This one?
Yes. Does yours have your name or anything on it?
No.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Who, who signs this, John, the tax collector?
Whoever, John, I don't, I don't recognize that young lady's name, but.
Yeah.
Okay. We do need to write, um, a conditions of approval, which, um, I can work with Josh on, but, um, there're going to be some, probably some new conditions of approval, we're tightening up some things, but nothing onerous, it's what should have been done anyway. So we won't, I won't read those off until we close the public hearing, we're ready to make the decision.
I'd like to close it.
If we do, then he can't have it, it's not a complete application.
Can we do it on the condition it gets that signed?
We couldn't take it as input if we closed the hearing.
You could close and approve it with a condition of receiving a signed-off tax verification from the treasurer.
I'll go tomorrow.
And if, if we don't receive it, then we don't issue the approved.
I'd like to, we, I was the one that was a stickler when he came before us and it was expired. And I'd like to move it forward as we said we would do, close the hearing, make the stipulation, and let's move forward. Sounds good.
Is that a motion?
I, I think it's, it's probably a little bit outside the barriers, but.
Okay, and I, I, I appreciate all that, and I support that, and I understand the hardship, but if we do it for him and we don't do it for somebody else, excuse me, if we do it for him and we don't do it for somebody else, what does that mean?
The difference is, he had an application and everything was approved, because of oversight, it was a month overdue, if he did it a week early, it'd be okay. And I understand the precedent, believe me, I've brought that up many times before. But in this particular case, there's a hardship that we imposed on him, I don't think you can use that as precedent.
I don't think we imposed the hardship, I'm sorry.
I know, maybe the wrong word, but.
Well, let, let me ask you this, um, the plan is obviously to subdivide so you can build another home. Do you have a, a pending purchase and sale agreement that's contingent on this being approved, or is this something you're planning for down the road to either provide to a family member or sell, or?
That's, it all depends on if it gets approved.
Well, I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to gauge a sense of urgency, is what I'm saying. I mean, if you've got someone sitting outside in, in a car with a check, waiting for you to come out and say, yep, we're good.
Right.
That, that puts a different spin on it.
We, we, I'll go with group, because this, let's get this done while you're still here. And I'm okay with conditioning it the way Josh said, understanding that, and I'll accept that we're not setting a precedent.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste, all in favor, Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Chair vote's aye. Do we have a motion to approve with the condition that we received a signed, completely filled-out tax form in the planning office?
And the form.
What?
That's all you need?
Well, and then.
And then we have to put together.
The conditions we have time to do.
Yes, and we're, I'll, I want all the same conditions that we did for the subdivision listed, uh, and, and while we're on the record for Mr. Cudaro and, and for Josh, for, for the future, we're running into a problem with a previously approved subdivision, um, where they're arguing about the as-built plan and the, the cost value, so my request to the planning office and to our consulting engineer, if we build a schedule of values in the future, or we create a tripartite agreement, I would like to see a line item for the as-built plan in the, um.
In the schedule?
In the schedule. And there's probably some other things that we're learning that weren't in the schedule that aren't being done, so we, we, we need to protect the town for those things, for unscrupulous developers, not for reputable developers, but.
All that being said, with those conditions, a move for, we grant approval.
Second.
Motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste, all in favor, Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye, with the understanding that I'm not being given the opportunity to read the conditions into the record, but I will work with the planning office to create the decision document. And if that's acceptable to the applicant, I'm, there's nothing onerous, but it's going to refer to the subdivision rules and regs, all the inspections that are required, um, the as-built plan, so if you look at the subdivision rules and regs and the form end at the, at the end of the, the thing, we're, we're, we're getting burnt by not having enumerated some of those things in the past. So it's nothing that's not, I'm not, I'm not inventing things, it's just enumerating stuff that's.
Hasn't been, really hasn't been addressed.
Yeah.
That being said, you're good.
I'm good, yep.
I want, I'm, I'm asking, so is that, otherwise, I'll wait and we'll read it all out loud and.
No, that's fine.
And chair vote's aye. So get that tax form signed.
All right, and get it to Sonia?
And get it to either Sonia or Josh.
Okay.
And Josh, just let me know when you want to work on, we got a whole list of them we've got to finish.
Say, you guys are going to be busy.
Yeah, yeah.
It's supposed to be the chair doing this, you've got another week. Your, your term doesn't expire for seven more days.
Turning my resignation? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You, too.
So.
Excuse me.
What are we doing with the continued public hearings that weren't public hearings?
For Hidden Trails, we closed the public hearing, we have not voted.
Right, that should be up for a vote.
Or, or discussion.
Right.
Uh, and for.
Tony's Lane, we voted.
We voted, so I'm not sure, other, Josh, you and I, for Tony's Lane, we worked on a draft, I don't think we need to take any act, we voted on that, right? There's no action.
Yeah, we're going to just look at my notes from the last meeting to see if there's a reason it's on the agenda, but I'm pretty sure we're good, but I'll do that very quickly.
Okay, so let's, let's open, let's, just do Hidden Trails and then.
Yep, okay, um, so Hidden, 15-23, Hidden Trails, Off County Road, special permit for cluster development and site plan review is, there's somebody here that wants to come forward, it is not a public hearing, we're here for discussion and possible vote.
Yeah, through you to the planning office, Josh, did we finalize the, I know that Ken and Mr. Titlebaum had some exchanges, have they seen the final draft of the, and I know that Mr. Bertolo requested a copy, did he get a copy of that document? I have not seen the final document.
Yeah, I know Ken was working on it, I think as of today, he just had one question about, uh, the language and the easement, uh, but he was supplied that, so have you guys seen the final?
I have not, so I can't comment on it.
Yes, I, I haven't seen it either.
We did approve Tony's Lane.
I thought so.
500 last week, my last meeting.
I'm sorry. It's the same engineering firm, it's just a different.
It's getting late.
So. I suppose we should introduce ourselves to the record. Attorney Peter Titlebaum, T.E.I., T.E.L.B.A.U.M., and with me, we have engineer Brad Bertolo, B.E.R.T.O.L.O.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're, this is just discussion preparation for vote deliberation, um, can I ask a comment? My, uh, my comment would be, I'm ready to vote, uh, and any vote that I take will be conditioned on the decision document. I was hoping that you guys had had a chance to at least see some of the draft language that I had proposed, and it was primarily around inspections and the as-built plan and things like that, uh, I did not invent anything, um, but I did enumerate stuff that were being questioned on in some other cases, but I would have hoped that you had had a chance to comment on it.
You didn't get to see it.
No, if I may, through you, if I could just ask, uh, Carl to sort of summarize the, the things that he was just putting in, I don't know if you have a red line or anything like that, you could.
Give me, give me a chance to go back and look for it, but it, it was basically, I took everything out of the subdivision rules and regs, I also took Mr. Rowley's, um, inspection plan that he had provided some years ago, basically, I was saying that inspections are required, and, and we enumerated some, like, particularly for the subdivision, particularly the places those inspections need to occur. I also enumerated that the applicant is responsible for keeping copies of the inspection documents. One of the things that the form end says, when you want to close everything out, you've got to have the package of inspections, and the record-keeping, historically, not pointing fingers at anybody, but nobody can come up with the inspection forms for any of these subdivisions we're trying to close out. So I, in the conditions of approval, said, if, if Mr. Cudaro comes out, does an inspection for you, make sure you get a copy of the darn thing and keep it in your file. And where, the town is supposed to be doing that as well, but I'm just trying to not have problems in the future, because we're trying to close out subdivisions and nobody can show the inspections occurred. So that, those were the kind of changes, and the requirement at the end to have an as-built plan, which is, again, in the subdivision, it's, it's, I, I didn't invent anything, but people were forgetting it.
Just, uh, through you, Mr. Chair.
That's kind of the stuff I threw in.
Would it be possible, uh, with regard to inspections, I mean, I know that once you vote, you vote, and that's kind of the end of, uh, what goes up on the webpage typically, but is that something the planning board might want to consider in the future to put into its rules and regulations, that they be kept apprised of inspections as they occur?
We could, one of the things we were, were working on is the rules and regulations, I, there was a draft version of the rules and regulations that, that sort of said that, but I, I don't know that it says that we get notified. So my thought was, because that's not called out in the rules and regulations.
Put it in the decision, yeah.
Put it in the decision.
I'm just trying to make your life easier going forward.
The point is, is that I want to be clear with, with the applicant of what the expectation is, and for the future boards, because it's, I don't know how long it's going to take you to build this, this is off the, how long do you think the whole development project is going to take, a couple of years?
Couple of years on the roadway?
Yeah, and you still have to wait for the conservation commission and that kind of thing, so that condition would be noted as well. If, if we were to vote positively, uh, we would, in the finding, respond to the concern that 1551, um, is not complete, we do have a ruling that's.
Suspenders that one a little bit if we could, but.
And just so you're aware, our current director of planning was working on the decision. He had just one question about conditions of the easement. That was at 3:45 today.
Which was language you sent in, I think, Mr. Titlebaum.
Yeah.
Right. So he requested that from me this afternoon at 3:45. I got it to him at 3:59, a minute before I left the office, and then he sent the final draft conditions at 4:15. So I just forwarded them to the board and to Brad and Mr. Titlebaum.
Okay. All right. So we need to enumerate our findings and, well, we should, but whatever. I'm prepared to take a vote then with that understanding.
Okay.
So we closed the public hearing, right? Oh, we did that already.
The public hearing is already closed. Just a matter of making a motion.
You're going to make it? permit, because I think there's three documents we have to sign. We have to sign the cluster development, we have to sign the site plan special permit, and I think the subdivision plan as well. I think there's three approvals. Huh? Site plan and special permit, yeah. So I move that we approve those three items relative to this project, this cluster development project, subject to the decision document and the conditions that we've discussed, subject to clarifying the easement right-of-way question that's going on with Mr. Titlebaum and the planning office, subject to the understanding that the interpretation we have on 1551 is that we do have a order of conditions, but that development can't proceed until the case that's going forward with D O E R, I guess, right? And that's my motion, I guess.
We have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor. Mike?
What's the motion?
To approve.
To approve? No.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Hi.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
And as this was special permit site plan and it required a supermajority, so we had that.
Yep. So I'm looking, I've got the order of conditions, you know, that Josh sent out that you just agreed to. What's this line number 14 about? Free lunch for life for Carl.
I, that, if that gets through, it's a good deal.
Does it only say Carl? I thought I put Mr. King in there as well. Sorry about that.
Yeah. I've never seen that before.
Be careful. He hasn't gone yet.
In his head, he has.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you for putting up with us for the past, what, 10 months now?
Ain't nothing.
We know you guys are made of stern stuff, so thanks again for all your work on this, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your service to the town. I've told people repeatedly, Board of Selectmen is not the toughest job in town. This board is the toughest job in town, so.
I'm not going to argue.
You did a good job. You can leave with your head held high. Thanks.
Thank you.
So in regards to Six Tony's Lane, I had that it was closed and approved with the standard conditions along with a set of inspections as agreed upon by the planning director and town engineer.
Right. So it just.
So it just got on the agenda and it requires no action.
So one quick piece of other business is annually, we have to vote to, in this case, have Sam be our representative for the capital planning.
Didn't we do that?
CPC.
Oh, okay. Other business.
I was told late today that representing has to be done every year. It's not a term.
So I move that Sam be reappointed to.
Second.
Everything, everything he was doing.
Second.
Capital planning.
We have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Jane. All in favor. Mike?
Hi.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right. Number comments?
I have other business, which I did send in to make. This is first through you to the planning office. I want to understand why 59 Main Street is going to the zoning board of appeals rather than coming back to a modification to the special permit site plan or moving the dumpsters around. I believe that's incorrect, and I asked for a ruling on that. They're going, they went already, what's today? Yeah, on the 17th. And we weren't given an opportunity to comment. I did send comment to the chair. I didn't hear anything back. That should have been a modification. He is trying, we already discussed the dumpster placement with him. It was twice. It was a specific part, and so I want to know, do I need to go and object to the ruling at the clerk's office?
Sorry, I'm just looking at my notes from that meeting.
It wasn't just the dumpsters either, I think.
59 Main is.
The restaurants. Yeah, he was making changes. Why isn't that a change to the site plan special permit? There's nothing to get a variance on yet. You want the project number? It was 3324.
Hey, Carl, why are you writing? I got a question. It's that pavilion that's up there. Where they put the clam shack, I mean, the ice cream pot?
I got to go back because we only approved a part of his revised modification.
Didn't he pull out the ice cream?
I, yes, he's, there's a lot.
If he pulled out the ice cream and moved the pavilion over, then that's a modification.
Right. We don't, remember, he came back with the modification. He wanted to change things with the.
The other week, he was changing something, yeah.
But we only approved the mods to the, to the restaurant and did not approve any of the changes to the pavilion or the clam shack. And we, he came back before us with a violation. He moved the dumpsters without approval. We had a hearing on that. So the whole process is shady. And I want to know why I didn't get an answer when I raised this concern.
I will look into this, and I will get you an answer.
Thank you. And I need to know quickly if I have to go to the clerk's office and file an appeal. There's, we got to get better. The board's working together. I sent the chair a note. I didn't hear back from him. I sent Mr. Turner a note. I didn't hear back from him. I sent Ken a note. I didn't hear back from him. This is not a good way for boards to work together.
Had that conversation this afternoon. Select person, two. No more complaint, public hearing. I'm sorry. The number one complaint from the public is lack of response from the town, from almost every department. Called Mr. Turner, nothing. Called Ken, nothing. Personally, called Sonia, nothing. Called Ken, nothing. Three calls to Sonia, no return. And it's system-wide. I don't think we can solve the problem, but it's rampant. It's not just anybody. It seems to be from the very top, from Derek, right down to the bottom. And I don't know, we're not going to solve it tonight. I know other boards have had the issue before them and discussed it, and it's terrible. And you're correct, it's terrible. Our customer service is horrible, and I don't know how we get it better. It's got to start somewhere, probably with the selectmen.
Well, just start demanding accountability. I mean, all the people that you're referencing, or majority of them that you're referencing that aren't responding are paid employees.
Well, and I, and I'm voicing my frustration. At the same time, my commitment to Josh and the planning office is, as a citizen and as a man, I will do whatever I can to help. The problem is, is that we're understaffed.
Well, that's without, yes.
And we're not, we don't seem to be doing anything to resolve those problems.
Agreed.
So it's difficult to continue to be a volunteer in those circumstances. And I do appreciate everything you do, Josh. No, I understand.
I'm not taking it personally at all.
You're a tough spot.
I don't see that 59 Main Street has been in front of the ZBA as of yet.
It was supposed, it was, the notice.
Isn't it Project 2323?
No, 3324 was the ZBA number.
Oh, okay.
I got an email from Sonia saying it was on the agenda, so maybe it didn't come up.
Yeah, I don't think it's been in front of them yet.
Okay.
That's good.
So I will look into why it's being applied for as a variance, and I can define that for you guys.
And I asked, if this is appropriate, please tell me that, and I will.
Sure. Understood. To give you an idea of what I'm dealing with, I had 100 unread emails on Thursday. I have 230 unread emails today.
That's a.
That's after responding to emails all day.
That's a conversation, though, between you and Derek.
Oh, yeah, understood.
My office is understaffed. What are we going to do about it?
Those conversations are currently happening.
Yeah, but they've been happening. I'll be honest with you. This is six years, as of next week, and that same conversation has been taking place for six years.
I believe it.
So nobody is interested in solving the problem. It's probably been going on a long, longer than that.
Ongoing conversation.
In harmony between the boards, good luck. I think the only project the boards worked together was on the mall. At least we did it simultaneously when we did that. And it's tough.
I don't think I had any other business.
Okay. There's only one thing left to say, Sam.
It's been a pleasure working with you.
That really wasn't what I was after.
Wish you would hang around. Make a motion, adjourn.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All in favor. Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Hi.
Carl?
Aye.
One more time.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
There you go. That's the last one.
That's it, signing off.
The chair votes aye.
Are you going on the, tomorrow?